Go ahead and I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six thirty one P M. And to begin, as I say, pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in most spaces. This meeting at North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. Now, I know some people might be listening on a north end. If you do wanna call in to be present, you can call in to five five nine, nine three one, two six five six. The pin number is seven three one, one zero six, four three zero. Now, just to be clear to begin, we'll start with just taking attendance. And since we did that beforehand, I'll say that all members of the school committee are present, as well as our superintendent and the assistant superintendent, Michael Connolly. Now, before beginning, I would just like to go a little bit off topic here and just say that I'd like to recognize the contribution of a person who just recently passed away, Robert Misery. You know, Bob Misery was a long-term member of many committees in North Reading. He served on the school committee, school committee for a number of years. He served with the select board, the board of selectmen before that, and many other committees in town for, I think, more than thirty years. It's a great loss to, you know, North Reading overall. I can tell you that Bob was an advocate for the schools in whatever position he was in. He was a creative thinker. I do wanna give the committee, you know, if anybody knows him, a couple of minutes to just kind of, you know, comment on him and then maybe have a moment of silence before we continue. But I would just begin by saying, you know, I met Bob when I was considering running for the school committee. I wanted to learn a little bit more about how town government works. And so, one person had recommended that I speak with Mr. Misery. The benefit I can say is when you talk to Bob Misery and ask him how things work in town government, especially how finance works, it's sort of like turning on a fire hose and trying to take a drink. Like, I was on the phone with him and I honestly didn't understand half of what he was saying. It was just so overwhelming, but, you know, the knowledge that that man possessed and the service that he gave to this town, you know, cannot be measured. And, you know, I just wanna thank him for all the service throughout the years. And I know with a lot of new members in school committees, so please, if you don't know him, don't feel like you have any obligation to speak. But I know that Patrick and maybe Janine might wanna have a couple of comments, so maybe Patrick, you had mentioned you might wanna say something?
Sure, thank you, Scott. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize Mr. Misery, who just contributed so much to our school community over the ten years that I've worked with him. I'd say he was certainly present through, you know, financial conversations, but what sticks out for me most is his contributions to the building project, the school building project. So many times when I was working with the technology for that building, Bob would bring up, you know, his personal experiences, as well as his personal expertise, as well as his professional judgment and his, you know, his knowledge of town government in order to make solutions, to think outside the box. Everything from our wireless networking and infrastructure to the phone systems, he had so many thoughtful opinions and he was always thinking ahead, always thinking of having enough redundancies and enough supports in there to help our, you know, to help our buildings be the best they could be. He was always someone that had new and creative ideas that he wanted to throw out for solutions to, you know, long-term problems and coming up with plans that could work at the long term. And he helped us out in so many ways. And he's certainly celebrated in town and he's well-known, but he also was an unsung hero, because I don't think a lot of folks know how much that he really did to contribute to our schools. So, I appreciate the moment to thank him for all that he did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Janine, anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what you guys said. He did establish a lot of well-thought-out meetings and programs within the town. C I T was one of them, C I T, Community Impact, and the Capital Improvement Plan on the C I T C, all, you know, bringing childhoods of Bob Misery. So, he will be glorified and my heart goes out to his family.
Mr. Buckley, if I could just comment as well, so this is Michael Connolly. Yes, I just wanted to echo the comments with Dr. Daley and Mr. Riano, but, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Bob for a number, a number of years, really through the finance planning team. And he was just really a key member of that team for so, so many years. And I'm sure he was probably involved in the creation of that F I N team format, which has served the community, both the municipal government side and the school department side, really, really well for a number, a number of years. And he was a key member and, you know, when Bob spoke, everyone certainly listened, because, you know, he always thought very intelligently and creatively to try to make things work as really a member of the, of the select board on that committee. But he was, he always spoke in a way to try to make things work for certainly both for the town government side, but certainly on the school department side. That was something I know myself and the superintendent who has served on that committee so, so appreciated. And he really did so much, as Dr. Daley said, behind the scenes, to help the schools and the community and to kind of make the numbers work. And it wasn't always easy and those conversations got heated. And Bob always had a very calm patience and really intelligent approach to all those conversations. So, you know, my heart goes out to his family and I really, really appreciated working with him so long.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly and everybody. If there's any other comments, and I would just say that we're gonna talk a lot about budget issues tonight and, you know, having, having somebody that thinks like Bob Misery, it's gonna be hard to replace. And so, he's a, he's a big boy, but I'd just like to take just a couple of minutes of a moment of silence in recognition of Bob Misery's place in the community of schools. Thank you, everyone. And I will warn everybody that shower time at the Buckley House, so if you hear anything in the background, I apologize. I'll try to stay on mute as much as I can, but I'm gonna begin tonight with the public input. So, I think there are a few members of the public that might be joining us tonight. If anybody would like to comment on anything that is not on the agenda already, you will have opportunities to speak about anything on the agenda. But if anybody has any topics they would like to bring up, please raise them now. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to the student report. And we are fortunate enough to have a student, Shivani Srinkan, Srinketh, joining us, class of twenty twenty-two. If you'd like to give a report, we would love to hear how things are going for you.
Yep, thank you so much. Hope you're all doing well, maybe come through time as this meeting's representative. I'll just be giving a quick update on how online is going with this going, with some examples as well. So, basically, as a quick rundown, high school class has been running from ten A M. to three P M. with four class today rotation schedule. We have green days on Mondays, so that's four of our classes. And then, we also have those on Thursdays. And then, we have goal days on Tuesdays and Fridays, you know, the other four. Wednesdays are now office hours, so students have been finishing up classwork in the free time, talking with teachers and catching up on learning materials and everything. And then, for you to get an idea of how classes are being held, I'll just summarize one of my classes. In U S history, we basically start the class at the Google Meet, where my teacher informs the agenda and goals to meet for the class. Then he either shares his screen, or he can clip on a topic, or he's just predicting it virtually. And we hang up and then go to a reading room on our own and answer analysis questions. Class usually finishes with an exit ticket, which is just an online Google forum, which gets some multiple choice questions about the class content. Then a suggestion box, where we can also give feedback on class activities. Teachers are also finding creative ways to break group work when possible. In my A P Environmental Science course, we've been doing shared mini projects, where we kind of answer open response questions by ourselves, post our answers on this app called pay grade, and then have other students give us feedback and a mock survey to help us prepare for the A P exam. In addition, with the school ready to make accommodations and take suggestions with students, I have been collecting some summaries from students on their opinions and suggestions from this infilling and any ideas they have to make it clear. And I've been giving those summaries directly to Dr. Daley, so he can take these concerns into consideration. Finally, clubs are working currently on virtual office accommodations. And many people who are interested in running for positions like treasurer or secretary for specific clubs are sending their nomination forms to current club leaders in order to be chosen for next year. It seems this is a school that's adapted quite well to our needs and we seem to be having good days too, from the points of view.
Excellent, thank you so much. Did any members have any?
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mike Allen?
I think I was gonna ask Shivani, how you think the A P prep is going?
Um, I definitely think A P prep is going pretty well. Now, in my A P class, we've been focusing all of our class time on prep and F R Qs for this new adapted version of the A P exam. The new version is basically no multiple shifts or eights at least, and we're doing just F R Qs, which are three response questions. So, we've been doing a really good job of getting us ready both with the online concept of it, but the content, so we've been kind of balancing the two with class time.
Great, thanks. Excellent. So, I have a couple of questions. So, I mean, number one, the first I've heard, you mentioned that you get, you get student, you know, reviews from other classmates. Is that in all of your classes or just, just some of the classes?
Um, this is just something I submitted on the schedule. I checked in specifically asking if he wanted to hear some of like suggestions from other students to follow up. And he said, should we just let him know? So, I've been so far from gratitude from my English classes, but basically it's just this little summary of some of those suggestions or ideas, or their reflections on online learning. I have to thank Dr. Daley, so he can be have one of the other students.
Wonderful. How are your parents adjusting to this? I mean, have you had any, any technical issues or?
Um, I think my parents are doing really, um, basically moving all this system through the entire day, but, um, technical difficulty, I don't think so, I don't feel like so. Like, um, excuse me, a couple Wi-Fi problems, but it's been okay so far.
Good. Well, thank you very much. And if there's any other comments or questions? I don't think so. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight, and you are welcome to sign off, or you can stand if you'd like as well. So, really appreciate your, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on. We have no continued business. First part of business is gonna be a COVID nineteen update. And I know that we also have the senior class president here, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Daley first to talk a little bit about COVID nineteen and then introduce our senior class president.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Buckley. So, the latest update is, I think we've covered, but perhaps not in an open session, so I just wanna share that we are currently closed until June twenty-ninth. That was extended by the governor. We continue with our remote learning. We are following new guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that provides additional, what they're calling power standards or essential standards. So, they're looking at the standards for the year, helping us to think about which standards are most essential for all students to learn and to go deeper into between now and the end of the year to best prepare them for advancement to the next grade. And so, those standards were provided for just about all four academic areas. We have followed up with the department to provide some additional standards for those areas that were not covered in the first draft. And they're going to continue to provide more information for us as, as we support our students moving forward. So, we have, we have provided, you know, I do wanna take a moment just to recognize this is Teacher Appreciation Week. We certainly wanna thank all of our teachers for what they're doing in these unprecedented times. They're really doing a fantastic job of learning new skills. I wanna give a special shout out to our digital learning team, who have really stepped up to the occasion. And I received one of the pleasant emails, I think I've ever received, from one teacher just praising another digital learning teacher about the amounts of time and effort and dedication and patience that she's put in. And I think that's true for our entire staff, and Dr. Downs is leading them. They've really done a fantastic job and risen to the occasion. Taking those Wednesdays, as Shivani mentioned, to do planning, professional development, the courses and workshops that are being offered daily by our digital learning team for folks to improve and enhance their practice are truly making this successful, and they're going to pay dividends, because all of these skills can be used in the future in sort of a hybrid format. So, we're very excited about that and wanted to give that information out. I think most of the other information related to the closure will be communicated throughout the, the rest of the evening through some other discussions. I will say that we did start back with our custodians full-time again today, working full shift. We're doing one whole shift with everyone on there and they're kind of staggered in their locations and maintaining social distance and best practices, but that did begin today. But I think the big topic that we've talked a lot about recently, Mr. Buckley, we've been involved in these conversations along with myself, Mr. LaPratt and others, is about graduation. And I think that having Emily here, she's done a great job, herself and the other leaders of the senior class, to represent the student voice, which I know that the committee values quite a bit. And so, I did ask her to come tonight to join us to talk a little bit about this process. We can't give away all of the details and information at the moment, because there's some things that we still need to get approved, obviously, by the town officials. And there is a meeting on that this week that we're gonna carry on, but Emily's gonna share the process and what she's done with her leadership work with the administration. So, Emily, are you with us?
Hi, I'm here.
Excellent, so, great, good to see you. And if you just wanna give a report and share out some of the information that we've worked on, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. So, hi, my name is Emily Cooperstein. I'm senior class president. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And also, a huge thanks to Dr. Daley, Mr. Hane, Mr. LaPratt, and our two class advisors, Ms. Gagnon and Mr. McIntosh. They've been amazing with understanding how difficult this is for all students, but especially the seniors right now, and have been really supportive with all of our ideas. So, the first part of this planning process was the foreclass office sent out a survey to our classmates, asking them what they thought was most important to them of a graduation and senior week. And they responded that their four most important parts of this were being with classmates, being with their immediate family, getting our diplomas, and being in a capping gown, which all of those are very understandable. So, we've been working with the administration and coming up with plans that would incorporate all of these ideas while still keeping everyone safe and being in accordance to the federal and local, state and local guidelines that have been set forth. So, we're currently developing ideas for a two-part graduation, because we thought that, we designed this two-part plan, because we knew it would be important that all students would be able to attend some sort of a graduation ceremony in June, while still incorporating very events that are very important to North Reading High School seniors' traditions for either late July or early August date. So, part one of this event, again, these are all still being worked out, but part one of this event would be some sort of a rolling rally, where at the end, we would be getting our diplomas. We're working closely with the police to work out these details, so we don't really exactly have them all right now. And part two would be some sort of a traditional senior week activity, again, still in accordance with the federal, state, and local guidelines that have been set forward at this point. Some of these ideas have included a barbecue or a drive-to-movie night. And we were able to reserve the Dan Riversport prom location for a date in late July. Again, we're really not totally sure if this will be possible at all, but we're very hopeful that it will be, especially after Governor Baker's press conference today. And then, this would end up with, at the end of the week, have some sort of a capping gown event that would have the traditional graduation ceremony, again, contingent upon the ability to do so in a safe manner.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Emily. I'm sorry, I'm sorry that this is your graduation, but I appreciate that you guys are trying to, you know, make the best out of it. I think, I mean, I think from my perspective, you know, graduation is about the seniors. It's not about the administration, it's not about the school committee, it's not about, it's about you, it's about recognizing you guys. And so, I think, I probably speak for the committee and for others in saying that, you know, as long as it's safe and we're not infecting people or spreading disease, at the end of the day, we really want this to be something that, you know, you guys will enjoy as best it can, that you'll remember. And so, and I know from my perspective, you know, whatever, whatever you guys want that we can do, we're happy to do. I was joking, if, I'll do whatever, you know, to hand diplomas out, I mean, whatever you guys say, we're happy to do. So, I appreciate you kind of being the, kind of the, the middle of the wheel, right, you know, coordinating everybody. And I understand that, you know, there's probably a few hundred different ideas out there, and so, it's a lot of work. And I just appreciate you stepping up and, you know, being a true leader of the class to try to help plan this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions for Emily? Yeah, okay. Patrick, any comments?
Yeah, definitely. I just wanna thank Emily again for, for her leadership and her communication. I think we have some great ideas. She's put in a lot of time and effort and has done, has done a great job advocating for your classmates, Emily. It's true, true leadership, and I'm sure you didn't see being a part of the role when you, when you took on the role of class president, right? And it's certainly different, but I think, I think you really shined, and I think you're gonna have a great opportunity to, to share some more great memories with your classmates, different than you expected, but, but unique in their own way. Like I said to you the other day, there may be some things that come of this that become a part of traditions moving forward. And we'll always look back and say this all started with the class of twenty twenty, so you never know. And, you know, this is, this is all about, you know, making the best of the situation, making lemonade, as I like to say, from lemons, and I think that's what we're gonna do. So, I'm really excited about, about the next steps. So, thank you again for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Thank you very much, Emily. If there's no other comments or questions, you can sign off, or you're welcome to stay if you'd like. Okay, we're gonna move on to the school calendar. And so, Dr. Daley, are you going to present on this topic, I assume?
I am. So, I just wanted to share this quickly, but essentially, what I wanted to share with you is because we have worked through the April vacation, we spent two days of the vacation, just as a refresher for what we've done, the Monday holiday, and also, we took that Friday of April vacation. That would bring us with our regularly scheduled one hundred and eighty-fifth day, would be on the twenty-fourth of June. Because we took those three days, we could, we could do a couple of different things. One would be to take another day later in the year, another Friday day. Or another idea would be to just sort of power through. And I brought this to the teachers' union, I also brought it to the administrative council. And I think at this point, the suggestion from the group is to continue through and to end on the nineteenth, which is the Friday of, of the third week of June. So, the idea here is the next, there's two days, there is the, I believe, the twenty, I'm sorry, the twenty-fourth of May and the, no, I'm sorry, the twenty-second of May, and also the, the fifth of June. Those two days right now are scheduled to be half-days, and we would be changing the schedule, so those would no longer be half-days. Those days would now just be regular, remote learning days as, as we have planned. That June fifth day, which is slated as graduation, we will have some kind of ceremony. Our plan is to have something on or around that day. But those two half-days would just be remote learning days like the others. We would take the Memorial Day Monday holiday, and then we would just, as I said, we would just move through and we would get out on the nineteenth of June. So, that's the recommendation of the administrative council and the North Reading Teachers Association agrees with that as well.
Excellent. I mean, I agree with it as well. I don't know what other people thought.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah. I agree as well, although I guess, is it possible to think of those, of having a reserve if necessary, or do we think that once we've set this, we should, you know, keep it that way, no matter what? I mean, obviously, barring some weather thing or something, but.
Yeah, I think your office is open. Sure. Yeah, there's a part of me that wants, and I do still really like the idea of having that extra flexibility, seeing where guard in, in a month or so and what we're feeling. But certain pieces with the end of school, having that, that date sort of established, I think is important, is we're writing some letters to folks and trying to make some, some different decisions based on leaves of absence or things like that. I think if we had to, if we were into a situation, we could, we could do something with the day, just like if we needed a color, you know, a snow or something, if something happened in the middle of, of the summer, you know, the spring. So, I think we still could do something that could affect that day. We still have up until the twenty-fourth, if we needed to go into that next week. But everyone seemed to feel, based upon, you know, the refresher that we had last week in April, a vacation week, that we should be able to power through. So, I think, you know, if, if we found we really needed something, I think we could, we could change that again in a couple of weeks. But I think establishing a date was the consensus of the group. They wanted to have that as our date of the nineteenth.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other comments? Diana, good?
Yep.
Like a sound point? I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay. Well, how about, do we need to have a vote? Does somebody like to make a motion to revise the school calendar to end on June nineteenth?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the calendar as described with having the last day of school be the June nineteenth.
Second?
Okay, since we have to do a roll call for this, this is no more discussion. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And an I as well. Unanimous, thank you, everyone. Now, moving on, we have to do the school committee meeting calendar as well. So, Patrick, if you'd like to take this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So, as I mentioned previously, we've had to do a few updates here to the school committee. So, what I've just shared with you is a slightly amended calendar. A few things are crossed out as we reschedule, so for tonight, we're doing our budget workshop, the school choice vote, the super intense evaluation. For May eighteenth, that would be the budget vote at this time. And you can see that I've moved the school committee reorganization and the little school presentation. Those two events, along with the middle school presentation, I've checked in with, with the principals of the schools, and I've also checked with, with Mr. Buckley on this. And we've decided that, you know, the, the true spirit of those presentations is that they're hosted at the school, the students are presenting, and we just feel that we're not able to recreate those situations this year, to the extent that we'd like to do that and that we're comfortable doing that. So, we are, we are respectfully requesting that those presentations be tabled until next school year for the little school and the middle school. We don't think that they will have the impact that they typically have, and the principals felt that it, there's, there's quite enough going on at this time with the students to, to do this, that it couldn't be created and captured virtually. The other consideration is that the CPAC presentation on June first, that will continue. The elementary school improvement plan presentation and the retiring elementary personnel, who are honored usually at that presentation, we're gonna move those both to the June twenty-second date, on which we would have all of the, the school improvement plan presentations, middle, high school, and elementary, as well as the retiring folks from all the buildings. We don't have a great number of retirees this year, and we feel that we can accomplish this in one evening. And I think the, the bit of extra time for all of the improvement plans to come in the same night will be greatly appreciated. I've moved the. I've moved the, um, town meeting to the 29th, which is the time it's tentatively scheduled. And then I did add a date for July. We've been discussing a July date. Um, I have in there that that could be a virtual meeting, that's assuming that the, um, existing open meeting laws are extended to continue through the summer. But I'm just putting that out there as a, as a possible date for July meeting for us to check in. One of the items that we do need to do that over the summer is, uh, the superintendent's evaluation. Um, and I'm suggesting that, that night of July 20th, and if it is virtual, that might allow for some more flexibility. So, I thought we would update the schedule and these were the suggestions that I'm making as a recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we maybe put a motion on it and if you have any thoughts, we can discuss afterwards. Janine, since you made the first one, would you mind making a motion on this one as well?
Certainly. I move to accept the, um, updated school committee to be scheduled as, um, announced by Superintendent Patrick Daley.
Second.
Any discussion from anybody on this?
So, I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Uh, the, the dates all seem fine. Uh, so would we, but I wonder, um, so town election is now tentatively scheduled for the 23rd, is that correct? June 23rd?
Um, Town meeting?
No, the
Town election.
Yeah, at the moment, I think there's still some questions around those items. So, that's why I didn't, you may be addressing why I didn't put the reorganization in there later?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't a hundred percent sure of when that would be. Um, so, but i- if that is held, um, are you saying that you would want to see the, that reorganization scheduled at the meeting after it or something like that?
I would think we could do it, uh, we could, you know, extend the, um, usually we're meeting at 6:30 on the, on the night of the, um, town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just quickly and then going into town meeting, but perhaps we could, if, if that was, if that made sense, we could probably do the reorganization, just meet a, a half an hour earlier or something like that.
We could certainly do that. If, um, once those dates are kind of confirmed, there's so much that's, that's in the air with those dates. But, um, we could certainly put that in there, yeah.
Okay. And then, um, just throwing it out for the committee, when do we want to try to complete the, uh, uh, the self-evaluation? Looks like June 1st might be the time to, to do that presentation, but, uh, um, uh, what does everybody else think?
Janine?
I would agree with you, Rich, about June 1st. Just looking at the dates we have, that seems to be the right one.
Okay. So, I will, uh, we'll plan on that, uh, and, uh, um, we'll get the forms out, uh, further, so everyone has plenty of time.
I can certainly adopt, uh, and update the calendar, you know, if it's approved with those two, um, changes. And Doc, um, but we won't have to amend this again, but we may have to. But I can certainly make those changes as, as recommended.
Okay. Janine, since it's your motion, are you okay with the amendments from Rich adding the reorganization, uh, on June 29th for town meeting? And who can the evaluation on June, self-evaluation on June 1st?
I am.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this? With the motion pending, I'll take a roll call. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Now, we have to do the school choice public hearing and vote. So, for public hearing, I believe I have to open the public hearing. And this is gonna, so I officially opened the school choice public hearing, um, for 2020. And I turn it over to Dr. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. So, what I'm gonna share with you here is that, you know, under the Education Reform Act of 1993, there's a need to hold an annual public hearing on school choice. The term of school choice difference means that North Reading will accept students from other cities and towns for enrollment in schools. Once a student is accepted as a choice student, he or she is a student till graduation or the student opts to withdraw. The district receives an additional $5,000 from the sending districts' chapter 70 funds for each student accepted. After the hearing, the school committee has to make a decision on participation by taking a vote. And that vote is then reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by June 1st. Over the years, the motion approved by school committee is included to not participate in school choice because the program, as it is presently constructed, ensures that the needs of some children of the Commonwealth cannot be met. So, I believe that we need to have our hearing, discussion and vote on school choice participation. And Mr. Conley, I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that information?
Michael, are you on mute?
Sorry about that. Thank, thank you, Mr. Buckley. Yeah, I was, I was on mute. Um, no, Dr. Daley, that's certainly the, the process and, you know, as a point of discussion, you know, we historically have obviously voted not to elect to enter into school choice. Um, that would be the administration's recommendation this evening. Um, you know, certainly we all, we all understand the, the current fiscal constraints that we'll be facing as we get to, you know, momentarily in this meeting. And, you know, we feel that with the, with these recent, you know, budget challenges, as we looked at fiscal year 21, um, you know, many of the schools would already be, um, in some cases understaffed with, with, with max enrollment. So, you know, we fear that any potential new school choice revenue would, would just be needed to really increase staff and not, not enhance any program. So, under fiscal constraints, we, we don't feel it would be a, a wide decision to, to recommend, um, becoming a school choice school. Good, thank you.
Okay. So, open it up for discussion. I'll go around just to see if anybody has comments. Rich, give any comments or thoughts?
No comments.
Uh, Chris?
No, none at this time.
Diana?
No, just in agreement with the administration's recommendation.
Janine?
I agree. It's, uh, not anything that we need to venture into.
Yeah, and, and, and I would just add, I mean, I think there's, I, I see the purpose that's trying to be, you know, served by this, by this program. I just, for North Reading and especially this year, I mean, it's just not something that I, I think is good for our district. And so, I, I would agree with the administration's, uh, recommendation on that. And so, on the turn, uh, so I guess we have to have a vote here. So, if I can have somebody make the motion, the motion is included in our packet.
It is, and I will make it, um, I make a motion to not participate in the school choice because the program, as it is presently constructed, ensures that the needs of some children of the Commonwealth cannot be met.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I'm in agreement as well. For, uh, we agree not to participate. Um, there's no further discussion. I will call the public hearing on school choice to close. Okay. Thank you, everybody. And we'll move forward with payment of wages. But I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Conley, please?
Sure, I, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead, Patrick. Yeah, I was, I was just gonna introduce, um, and then, and then Michael can speak to it. But, um, you know, up to this point in the year, at each, uh, time that the closure has been extended, we have approached you about, uh, continuing to support our teachers and the payment of wages during the period of closure. Um, just to address, uh, clearly what we're calling for here, this would be through, and, and Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, not what it says here. I did it through the entire closure through the end of the year, but this would be payment of wages through the last day of school. This is another reason why setting that date is important. So, I believe that what we're requesting at this time is to keep our, uh, our current employees whole. These are our, our, our employees who are under contract with us, um, through, through June 19th of, uh, 2020. There are, I just want to note that there are some, uh, contractual items that we're in discussions with these unions to, to, um, discuss about how they are playing out in this very unusual and unique year. Um, and there, there are some conversations that are going to continue. But when we talk about, uh, payment of wages here, we're talking about the, the main benefits of the salary for the employees. Um, and I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Conley, could you just confirm that the date that I just said is the correct one? And it's the, the last day of school, which is June 19th?
That's correct. So, I think what we're, we're asking here, as Dr. Daley just, um, articulated, is we're, we're asking for a base, base payment of, of wages and salaries for school year staff to occur through June 19th, 2020. And then it would be, I guess, full year, full year staff to occur through the end of the fiscal year. So, it would be June 30th, 2020. It's almost, almost based, based on the, the classifications of the, of the staff. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so what we're looking for, so this has nothing, this does not relate to the letter, letter from the athletic director at all. We're not talking about excitement, correct?
Correct. That would be later items this evening. This is just about the regular salary wages for, um, our employees.
Okay. And so, we've had, we've had this before, so I don't, I don't expect that there'll be much more discussion on this. So, perhaps we can have a motion on this, on the payment of the wages, and then we can discuss if there's any further discussion.
Yes. I, I would introduce those other items in a moment, um, but I wanted to do this one first.
Okay. Janine, you did such a good job. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I was just trying to think how to, how to state it as good as I can. Um, I make a motion to extend the base salary and salary of the employees to June 19th and for the salaries of the other employees to the end of June. Does that make?
Yeah, it would just be school year employees through June 19th and then full, full year personnel through June 30th.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a second? Okay, perfect. Any further discussion from the committee? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Janine?
Um, who's second?
Go ahead.
Um, I believe
Yeah, question. No, I think this is, I think another, uh, public, go ahead.
I think, is that, is that Cindy asking who seconded it?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, roll call. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. It's most unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Daley?
Thank you. And so, for the next part of this, this would be, uh, some other information related to coaches for the spring. Mr. Conley, would you share that piece? I can scroll.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Daley. So, in your packet this evening was a letter from athletic director David Johnson, um, which I think he articulated the, um, really, really wanted to discuss this evening really well. And, and that is, um, the payment to spring, um, athletic, uh, assisting coaches. So, um, you know, Mr. Johnson, as the athletic director of this, of the, um, athletic program, is, is certainly advocating in, in his letter, um, that there be some, some recognition of the work that the athletic coaching staff did. Um, even though there, there is no, um, you know, spring season unfortunately, and that was devastating news to the student athletes, um, and the coaching staff and parents and certainly everyone involved in the community that, that looks so forward to, to each athletic season. Um, but I think that, that what Mr. Johnson is alluding to, and I think the administration, uh, certainly agrees with, with many of the contents in, in the letter, um, that there is quite a bit of work that does go into, that the, the coaching staff does put into before the start of the season. So, the start of the spring season was due to begin on, on, uh, March 16th, just, just about right before, um, the school closure period begins. Um, and, you know, a lot of work, um, in preparation of the season by the coaching staff, um, as Dr., as Mr. Johnson articulates in his letter, um, uh, certainly, certainly had already occurred, um, so that the season really doesn't start on, on Monday, March 16th. It really starts kind of weeks beforehand with preparation of, um, you know, meeting, doing parent meetings, uh, doing preseason meetings with the team, you know, getting them, getting them ready, a lot of communication, uh, goes out to, to student athletes, goes out to the parents. Uh, a lot of the league, um, K family and, and state level, um, coaches meetings occur before the start of the season to review the schedule, to make changes to the schedule, um, to communicate that schedule to team and parents and, and, and review the, both the away and home game schedule, as well as at the state level to review the, the, my, uh, tournament schedule as well. So, a lot of that work did, did begin, uh, before March 16th. And, um, when the school closure period was initially announced, it was announced through April 27th, I believe. Um, and it eventually got extended to, to May 4th. But in, in that, in that four or five week period, um, the, the teams and the coaching staffs were very hopeful that there would be a season. So, in that, that four or five week period where we were, you know, waiting to see what the situation would be before the, the cancel of the season occurred, um, sometime about, you know, a week and a half or so ago or so, um, there was a lot of communication as well to, to the team members during that period to make sure if and when, if they were able to begin the season on Monday, May 4th, that they, they would have been ready, ready to go. So, um, what we want to do here is, is recognize, um, and appreciate Jay Johnson's advocacy for the, for his coaching staff. Many of the coaches, um, in the programs, you know, fortunately are, are, are longtime devoted, um, you know, members of, of not only the coaching staff, but they're also, you know, chairs and staff members in the district. And we, we would like to, to certainly recognize them with a, a, a partial payment of their wages for the spring season. Um, Dr. Daley and I have reached out to many districts across the state on this exact question to inquire, um, what is happening across the state as well as in the K band league. Um, you know, we haven't heard back from, from everyone, um, but we've certainly heard back from, from more than a few. And we do feel many, many districts, and there's at least a, a half a dozen or so I've heard back from, to the K band league, um, are certainly moving forward with some type of a par- partial payment. Um, you know, there are some that maybe be electing not to pay, that I think, I think those are in the minority based on the, the information that we have. Um, but certainly, you know, we, we feel it's, it's the right thing to do, um, to, to recognize the work that has gone into and preparation. Um, and certainly appreciate their efforts, um, as well as the, you know, we want, we want the staff to be, be more than ready to, to go and return even, even more devoted, um, as we look to the future. So, what we're prepared to recommend is that, um, and to, to open up for discussion is that we, we move forward and improve it this evening, a, a partial payment of, of 25% of, um, to head coaches of, of what their, their full contractual base stipend would have been should, should there have been a full season, and a 15% uh, partial payment to the assistant coaches. Um, and you, you certainly, we've done something, we certainly know that, uh, financially, look at the finance, the, the financial, um, you know, decision and impact of that. Um, it adds up to just over $20,000, um, in spring stipends. If there had been a season, we would have probably paid, um, you know, close to $100,000, a little bit more in, in stipend payments with, with postseason compensation being part of that, that payment. And so, uh, we've certainly done, um, a lot of reviews, certainly on, on my end. And, and, you know, I, I certainly feel like this is unnecessary and I do feel it's, it's affordable. It's part of our FY20 budget, budget projections at this point.
Um, Mr. Conley, my, my, your comment? Um, I just wanted to reiterate what you said. I want to say, you know, we, when we initially went out and we weren't, we were unsure of what the season would look like. This was one of the pieces, when we talked about keeping folks whole, that we certainly have, have put off. And I, I appreciate that our And I, I appreciate that our, our teachers' union, um, has been very patient and working with us on this conversation, um, for, for a long time. But as, as Mr. Conley, um, mentioned, as Mr. Johnson's letter mentions, you know, these, these folks, many of them are our teachers. Others are, are coaches, have been long coaches for a long time for us. And they are still in many ways engaging with our students, whether it's, um, on social media or through other forums. Um, there's, there's been a lot of, of support given to our students who are, who are really disappointed that they're not playing, especially our seniors, who are looking forward to a, a senior spring season that, that didn't happen. And there's been a lot of things going on behind the scenes, but these folks are doing to help our students, um, cope with some of those disappointments and to also be creative in different ways, um, to, to experience some kind of that social aspect of team sport if they can't be out there on the field. And so, you know, I, I trust that, you know, Mr. Conley, when he runs, and is able to do something, uh, for the folks to, to show our, to show our appreciation of that support and for the work that they've done this year preseason and also some of the support during the season. Um, I, I do support and recommend, um, this, this action. So thank you for presenting that, Mr. Conley.
Yeah, no, thank you, Dr. Daley. Great, thank you. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Conley. Um, I, I have a lot of concerns about this, to be perfectly honest, but I want, I want to, before I start throwing my thing around, I want to, uh, open it up for discussion from other members of the committee, i- if anybody has. I'll, I'll go around just in case if people do. I mean, Chris, Chris, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Uh, sure. Um, I, I follow the logic and philosophy of, of wanting to give some percentage to recognize, uh, what is most certainly a good amount of work that went in, even when there isn't an actual football season this year, um, and all the circumstances around it. My, my only question then is, um, my understanding is that this, this pay comes, or typically all these, these stipends are paid entirely out of the, the, um, I can't remember where, the payment that people make so that their kids can, can
User fees.
Thank you very much, user fees. Uh, and without there being spring user fees this year since this stopped before the, um, the season began, uh, is this ends up just, we have to find the twenty thousand dollars for this? Uh, Mr. Conley?
Yeah, because that's a great question, Chris. I probably should have addressed it in the opening comments. But that, the one item in that, and that was for the first time in fiscal year twenty, that, that actually is, is not the case. So we, we used to budget a, a partial payment, um, of, of the coaches' contractual stipends coming from, uh, the revolving account. First day revenue generated from the user fee or the gate receipt. Uh, we've been trying to phase that out, given the, the fact that expenses have been going up, um, beyond stipends in the athletic program. So for, for the past two year twenty, all of the coaches' stipends payments are actually part of the general operating budget. Whereas the user fee, um, so the user fee is not support, the revenue from, that goes into the revolving account is not support coaching stipends. It supports, uh, everything else that's part of the program. Equipment, supplies, transportation, um, you know, rental, rental costs of, of ice pool, uh, uh, officials, game personnel, uh, all other expenses related to running athletic program are paid for by the user fees and the gate receipt.
So then, if I'm understanding uh, if I'm understanding correctly, then it sounds like, um, the lack of user fees won't impact, uh, the budget at all because it seems like all of that money really, close a hundred percent is going through operational costs. It just won't happen this year. And that's right. And then, um, to really, this won't, this means that there will be twenty thousand dollars less of that money left over from others that we plan to spend. Um, but it won't, it won't have, have trying to find it from some other, other source.
That's correct. So it's, it's money that was, it was budgeted, um, you know, as you know, we're, we're trying to, um, obviously save in all areas that we can right now, given, given the uncertainty around, um, you know, your fiscal week, you know, not only at, not only at the local level, at the state level. Um, and we're obviously going to be in the conversation that will occur after this, in the next agenda item, we'll talk about some, some potential impact of some of the revolving accounts that we, uh, had planned off that's for, that will now have to, you know, ha- have a potential, you know, downfall and impact. So, uh, we, we've looked at everything really closely. Uh, you know, I, I had talked several weeks ago about a financial risk assessment that was done, that looked at these types of things. I, I continue to update that on a daily basis. And we have certainly found ways to save, um, a little bit more than even I had initially projected. So I think I had shared a number of what that delta was, so that we, that delta continues to go down. So I, I do think we're in, we're in good financial, uh, standing in fiscal twenty to, to, to make such a payment. That's why we're, we're, we're kind of confidently, you know, recommending it this evening and, and for all the reasons that, again, Mr. Johnson noted in his letter and, and Dr. Daley articulated this evening, we, we do feel, um, like it's the right thing to do as well.
Okay, then. Uh, Rich, any comments or questions?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Um, I definitely feel like that, that, uh, the coaches who may, you know, on good faith may, you know, began their work for the spring season prior to the beginning of the spring season and, and even continued that work, um, through the early parts of the, of the school closure period, not knowing whether or not the season would be, uh, canceled for real. I don't, I, I, I'm not sure that in good conscience I could vote to, uh, against compensating them in some, some way. Um, that being said, uh, like I just want, uh, your last comment there at the end, um, you know, it may well be that, that we sort of quote unquote have the money for, in terms of part of the twenty twenty budget. But obvious, or maybe it's not obvious, maybe I'm wrong about this, but, um, you know, it would seem like, given the challenges we're going to be facing, uh, going forward, any, any savings that we can realize are going to have an impact on twenty twenty-one. So I think, I mean, i- i- am I, I'm not wrong, or am I wrong about that, or?
I mean, that's certainly a, an accurate statement. Um, I think we, certainly in, you know, experiencing a level of, of savings that we think we're going to be able to, 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 um, do our best in a, in a legal way to, to make available, um, in fiscal twenty-one. I will say, it's, it's been a limitation to that. There's only so much of that you can do in a, in a, in a legal, in a legal format, um, to spend or somehow make, you know, savings in FY twenty, um, of, of, in, in subsequent, you know, budget years. So, you know, I, I think we, we're still experiencing, in my opinion, quite a bit of savings here in that, in that line item. Um, not the full, the full line, but, you know, we're still experiencing, um, over eighty, eighty thousand dollars of, of savings. So I, I, I think that is a special amount that, that we could, that will be important for us to use, and I think we'll, we'll maximize that as well, so.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the, what our decision, what that, what that for either or, you know, you know. Is that money that is useful or is it money that, 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 that is more restricted, you know? Anyway, uh, as I say, in general, I'm, I'm, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable not coming around to some, uh, compensation for the coaches for their efforts, you know? And I just want to say too that, uh, first of all, I appreciate, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson's, uh, passion here, uh, in his letter. I think he did a really nice job articulating all that. And also you can see the effort on the coaches and have an excuse on Twitter, uh, on social media, um, as they come up their, their teams and, and, and talk of their teams, their, their, their players. And that's been really great to see, uh, along with all the other activity, uh, from all of this staff, uh, in the last few weeks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Inberon, have you got any comments or questions or thoughts?
Um, nothing that hasn't already been said. Um, it's a sad situation, and I think Mike and Patrick are doing a, a really good job, just, you know, trying to make the best of everything.
Mrs. Botwell?
Same, I think Rich articulated it well, um, in the, in that vote, so thank you.
So I, I have a number of thoughts and maybe Rich McGowan's, uh, point, maybe my conscience isn't, isn't as, uh, troubled by some, some other things. Um, I, I find it's hard right now because we're going to be talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. I understand a lot can't be carried over year to year, but we can buy supplies that can be used for next year. We could replace smart boards. We could, you know, prepay special education costs. Um, there are things that we can do. Right now, we've been doing our best to try to make sure that we keep all salary positions here. We try to keep every, you know, food service workers. We've been trying to do well by our bus drivers and, you know, for, for spring sports, like, I, I appreciate that it worked that goes into it. I a hundred percent appreciate that. I appreciate none of it, you know, whether I vote for or against, you know, paying a stipend does not in any way mean that I don't appreciate the work that's being done. But I, I just feel like at some point in time, something has to be cut, and there has to be money that is saved in some way. And we're going to give back the full user fee most likely because sports didn't happen. No practices happened, you know, no games happened, no trials happened, I don't believe. And there were meetings that were held beforehand, um, but more than that, I mean, just the way that it's being presented, twenty-five percent to head coaches. Head coaches make nine or ten thousand dollars, you know, and, you know, like a tier one or category A, category B coaches. Whereas just, you know, we're not saying like what was done. If there was like a couple of meetings done by every coach, like certain coaches make a lot more because they were, you know, they have a sport that plays every day and other people might play once a week or, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think a twenty thousand dollar payment, which is normally a hundred thou-, you know, normally a hundred thousand dollars paying, you know, basically twenty percent of the full fee, when no practices, no tryouts, no season happens. I mean, if we wanted to talk about doing, you know, a five hundred dollar stipends to head coaches to show our appreciation, that's one thing. But I, I, I don't know. I mean, and, and again, I'm one vote and I'm, I'm not going to try to persuade everybody. I just think, you know, I sit in finance planning team meetings, I see how tough revenue projections are going to be. I see where we have to get to, and I just, I, I, again, we're, we're, we've been trying to prioritize keeping as many positions as we can. And I think it's hard to vote for paying stipends for, you know, athletes that didn't occur this year. And so I, I appreciate where everyone's coming from. I, I do. This is not in any way saying, you know, I don't appreciate the coaches. I don't appreciate that there's been planning done for seasons. I think a lot of, you know, anybody that played any sports understands that a lot of, a lot of success comes from off season training and planning and thinking. But I, I, I just think it's hard as one of the keepers of the town funds to authorize paying, you know, stipends, especially this substantial stipend for seasons that didn't even happen. And so, you know, for me on this specific proposal with, with every head coach, you know, I, I don't know the level of work that's gone into different ones. I, I, again, to say that we're going to pay, you know, two thousand dollars to some coaches for, I, I don't know. I don't know what we're going into that. It just seems a little bit excessive to me at this point in time. So that, that, that's my challenges with it. And I, I don't know. I mean, so I, so I think on this specific request, I think my, my vote would be against that. Um, I don't know what other people think and if, you know, we can just vote on it right now or I'll just open it up if anybody else has any other thoughts or questions or comments.
So I guess, uh, Scott, one thing I'll say is, uh, that, you know, obviously a blanket number or a blanket percentage is definitely potentially, um, uh, you know, advantaging one person over another or disadvantaging one over another. Uh, I'm not sure how you, you square that out, um, uh, without doing maybe a lot more work and analysis. Uh, how did you, uh, uh, Michael and, and, uh,
Yeah.
Patrick, how did you guys come down, come to those numbers?
So I've done the, certainly the analysis, and, um, first of all, just note that, that in the spring season, uh, there's no category A, um, in the spring season. So we're, we're really wanting a max, a max stipend of, of seven, seven thousand dollars for a head coach in category B. Most, most, unfortunately, we have very good longevity, um, and, and low, low turnover in, in operating coaching staff. So, you know, most, most of these coaches fall, fall in the same, the same area of, of, of being, being, you know, about the same level, the same stipend in, in category B or category D if you're an assistant, which is really what we're talking about. Um, so I think what we really did, we, we, some of, some of it was based on, um, you know, pair, pair district analysis from what we had. And, and we, we did our best to collect the data, uh, to, to date. I think we have some good data to go on. Not, not everyone has responded to the surveys that we've sent out, but I think there were a lot of, uh, districts, you know, K-Fan League that, that were moving forward with something, were falling, were fa- falling in the, in the range that we're recommending this evening, or, you know, in some cases higher. Um, in some cases slightly lower. Um, but I, you know, we looked at that, you know, sort of work that we believe, you know, does go into the season, um, you know, three or four weeks before the start of the season, as well as, and, you know, as, as Dr. Daley, I think, alluded to, um, the work that went on when, when we really felt that, and we're all hopeful that there was going to be a season. So that, that was, in my opinion, a good bulk of, of the time. And then, and even, even now, is, even though there's, the season's been canceled, I, I know there's, there's work happening. I, you know, they're trying to find virtual ways to, to vote for captains and vote for leadership next year. And, and coaches are setting up those, those surveys and polls and communicating out. So there, there is, there is work that's, that's happening and, and getting feedback and your assistance and, and, and helping set up, set up those, those, those Google documents and so forth to, to analyze those, that, those coaching, uh, decisions. So we, we felt twenty-five percent given the work that was coming from the head with some, some input from the assistants and a fifteen percent based on what we can afford financially, um, and based on what was being fair and, and reasonable to, to, and, and recognizing, um, our coaching staff. Not only for the work that's going, but just for the, the work that they do and, um, and continue to do, and the work that we will, we will, and to continue to do into the future. I know that we, they will. Um, and, and what some of our peers have done, we, we felt it would be reasonable enough to, to, to land on. And taking, you know, you know, a, a cost impact, it's bringing it back to the financials of twenty thousand dollars. We felt, I, I, I strongly feel it's something we can afford. And there, there is savings in other areas that I continue to analyze and we continue to optimize. But I think we're, I believe wholeheartedly, we're still going to be able to do all of those things that we're legally able to do to, to potentially to the highest extent that we can do, um, in terms of prepaying tuition and, and, and doing what we can, um, from a legal standpoint in our revolving accounts and so forth, that, that, uh, to help the situation, uh, that we're, we're faced with, um, in the next couple of years to come. So, um, that's, does that help answer the question?
That was helpful to me, yeah. Um,
Uh, I did jump in for a second. Uh, so, Mr. Buckley, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, and I think that, you know, in any, in, in the best of years, we have to be very careful about every dollar we spend on a school budget, and particularly where things are turning right now. Um, agreeing potentially now to, to give out, well, give is the wrong word, but to pay out twenty thousand dollars is something that should give us some real pause and, uh, and we should, we should weigh that in. But, but I think it goes back to Dr. Daley's, uh, point that he's made several times now, um, over the last couple of months, which is that this is about keeping schools' payments intact, keeping people whole as he said. Uh, these employees did some of this work and, and sure, they're not doing as much as they would do in a, in a regular year, but they're to a different extent counting on some of the salary, uh, as part of their lives. And I think that impacts a lot. And if we have it in our budget, we can, if we can honestly afford to pay them a percentage of this, uh, in recognition of work that's done and also to, to keep them whole, then I think that it is a priority for us and something to pause to do so.
And, and, and I, I appreciate the, the sentiment. I appreciate where it's coming from. But, but to me, I just think, again, ran, blanket, a blanket twenty-five percent to head coaches, we don't know what actually has been done. It seems like a lot of money when, you know, practices or C, or games that they can play. And, and again, I'm not actually trying to just, you know, dissuade anybody or change anybody's vote here. I just, you know, I, I think I just, for me, when I, when I just see where we're struggling and, you know, Michael, you, you mentioned the delta. I mean, it seems like we're still going to be in a negative in the delta. Um, we're, we're, you know, we're going to talk about that. Um, we're, we're, you know, we're gonna talk about that, where, where, you know, parents are gonna be paying for things that they can get full service of, you know, and, I don't know, it, it just, it's hard for me. So, um, but again, I think we can have a, a motion on it. There's, uh, there, there's a recommendation here of doing a twenty-five percent of the, to head coaches and fifteen percent to assistant coaches. And so I'd ask for somebody to make a motion.
Um, well, just, just one, one last thought, and I don't know if I'm stirring a hornet's nest, uh, not to make it sound very fun. But the, uh, with, with these coaches, and, and I agree with Mr. Connolly, um, I, I teach in Wakefield and I've seen it from my peers there, that, uh, some of these coaches are, are, are working quite hard now to, to try and help their, their student athletes out. Um, and if we're refunding user fees, uh, which will be coming up in a moment, um, perhaps some parents would be willing to, being aware of the situation, to, uh, make contributions that could help offset some of the costs of this pay. But again, I don't know if that's off base or, or anyone.
Well, I, I think one thing we're gonna talk about in the next, for refunds is that if there is a refund that is owed for certain things. I think spring sports, we're gonna talk about just going back, but on other ones, perhaps, perhaps there's an option to get a refund, or if you do nothing, you can, you know, count it as a tax, as a tax, uh, donation to the schools, you know, that you can potentially deduct in your taxes. Um, but I, 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 I don't wanna make, I don't wanna make Mr. Connolly and Dr. Daley's jobs any harder. I know this is, in the grand scheme of things, I know a lot of work has gone into this. Um, and we're talking about twenty thousand dollars and I don't really wanna, I know there's, there's a lot going on for both of them right now and I really don't wanna say go back to the drawing board. I just, a- a- again, I mean, I, I, I just don't see it the exact same way here. And so, uh, but I think we can have a motion on, right, right here. I think, I think there's a lot, a lot of work that's been done. People reached out to other districts and it, it's one hundred percent justifiable to give something. And at some, there's never gonna be an agreement on what that something is, whether it's a percentage, whether it's a, you know, a dollar amount or what it is. But, you know, I think we have a proposal, a suggestion here from Mr. Connolly and, and Dr. Daley. And I think we can, you know, have a motion on it, have a second. If there's further discussion, we can talk more and then, you know, have a vote and kinda go from there.
I'll, I'll be happy to make the motion.
Thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to approve the administration's plan to pay a percentage, uh, of the stipends for spring sports in the amount of twenty-five percent for head coaches and fifteen percent for assistant coaches.
A second? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any other thoughts? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Start with Rich.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Uh, I'm gonna be a nay, so it'll pass four to one. Thank you very much. And we move on to the refunds for spring twenty twenty. And I hand this over to Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly as well.
Great. I'm gonna, uh, Mr. Connolly, I believe you can maybe take the lead on this one as well?
Yes. Hey, so in your packet this evening, there was kind of a, a white list story of, of what we've kind of discussed in terms of, um, what we're looking, what the administration is, is recommending this, this evening in, in terms of user fee and, and tuition payment re- refunds. Certainly something similar to the topic we just discussed with coaches pay that we have certainly talked about a lot since, since we were dealt with, um, school closure and the, the extension of school closure. Um, something that, you know, we continue to, I continue to have conversations with my peers. I know Dr. Daley continues to have conversations with district superintendent peers. And, um, you know, not, not always an, an, an easy, easy discussion or, or, or an easy path, given that we're really in uncharted territory, um, and hope is unprecedented. There's not, there's not a lot to, to go on in terms of historical perspective of, of this situation. Um, so that being said, uh, in your packet this evening, we sort of walked through the, uh, the four major programs this evening that, that we are going to recommend some course of action in terms of refunding parents, um, eh, you know, based on, uh, disruptions of services that they felt, uh, they, they were, that would have happened, you know, should, should the school closure not, not have happened. So, the first being, I'm gonna take them, uh, one, one by one, based on the packet and we can, we can certainly take questions a, a, as I go. But the first being the athletic spring sports user fee. So we are recommending a full refund um, to those families who have paid in advance, um, online, uh, would be processed in the coming weeks. Um, it, it certainly may take us a few weeks to start processing some of these refunds, uh, as there's a lot of data entry and, and a lot of work would be involved, both in my office and at town hall. So, these all couldn't happen in one, in one full swoop should we, should we move forward with these this evening. It will take some time. Um, so in terms of spring sports, as I noted, we, we received about ninety-one online payments in advance that we would be do, looking to, to refund those families. Many other families have paid in, in, with check. We'd be actually not, not cash, with checks. We would just void and send those back to families. Uh, we would like to send communication out this week to these families. The total amount of the full refund of the ninety-one checks we have received, total is a little more than twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, I had noted here in the packet that our projection based on our anticipated, um, stipulation in spring sports, um, of a user fee collection is gonna be about sixty-five thousand dollars this year. So for us not collecting, um, a user fee, that, that is the, the amount. Um, but as, as I said, we're also saving a lot on the expense side in terms of, uh, we're not paying anything in the public transportation to our transportation provider, you know, we're not paying, um, officials. We're not paying game personnel, um, a lot of the supplies and equipment, you know, we've been able to put many of those on hold. Um, so there, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of contractual services and, and so forth, the things that are, we've, we've been able to hold and, and rental, rental of, of, um, some indoor, rental, all these types of things we've been able to stop and put on hold in, in enough time. Um, that really negates a lot of, a lot of the, the lack of this revenue in the revolving account.
Mr. Connolly, Mr. Connolly, what, what, my, my, my one suggestion would be, I think we should probably do motions on, on the, each of the subjects separately. So perhaps we go through one at a time and ju- just rather than going to full pay and then trying to jump back and forth. So perhaps we can finish up on the, on the spring sports, we can depress that, have a motion just on that and then section by section.
That's great. I would, yeah, I, I definitely agree with you. Um, yeah, Mr. Connolly, absolutely. So I, so that's really kind of a, especially what we're looking to present on the athletic spring sports side. You know, we feel, uh, again, everyone I've spoken to is issuing a refund. Um, you know, some schools have not, um, even started collecting. They don't start that process until the season starts. Um, you know, so, uh, a little bit easier from other districts I've spoken to, but uh, we do feel, um, these families would do the full refund. This was one that we had not, um, discussed or, or we had not, we were not gonna do sort of the option to, to either donate or, or give back, given that, uh, you know, only about, you know, thirty, forty percent or so had it, we've actu- had actually, we've actually cashed or at least we've taken that payment in. Uh, but we, we feel a full refund is, is the appropriate thing to do.
Um, thank, thank you very much. I mean, and, and, and I'll open up a discussion, but I, I agree with you. I mean, I, to me, I just think this is very obvious. Some people haven't even paid the fee yet 'cause it hadn't started yet. Um, it would be unfair to, you know, do anything other than this. The reality is no challenges are, no practices are taking place, no train to trial is taking place, no games are taking place. It needs a no-brainer that we should return these funds. That'll open it up if other people have other comments. Perhaps we can have a motion, a second, and then further discussion if there isn't.
I'll make a motion to refund, um, the families that have paid for the athletic spring season sports.
I'll second.
Second. Yep, fine. First and second.
Rich, for the second. Okay, any, any discussion? Anybody have any other thoughts? Any reason not to? Okay, we'll go through the, through the roll.
Not to, but it's the right thing to do.
To go through the roll call, uh, Janine.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that passes five zero. Thank you. Mr. Connolly, bus transfer.
Thank you. So similarly to the F of it, we kind, I kind of highlighted sixteen points. Um, we are recommending partial refunds be given to those families who either paid an individual bus pass fee of four hundred dollars, which is three hundred families, and then the family bus pass fee of six fifty. We received two hundred and nineteen of those payments from families. Um, we, we've kind of gone over this. And again, we're, we're, right now, we're, we're certainly looking at what, um, is appropriate in terms of the, the lack of services that have occurred. We're also certainly looking on the financial end. And it's really about trying to find a balance and trying to find that sweet spot and being fair and, and keeping an eye on, you know, fiscally as well. We felt that twenty-five percent, which is about a quarter of a year discount for, for lack of bus services, um, which was, you know, for the months of April, May and June was, was appropriate. If you look at it, if you kind of try to break up the year on kind of a quarterly standpoint with, you know, April, May, June being, being the final quarter. Um, so we feel, um, you know, this amounts to about a hundred dollar refund for those three hundred families that were paid the individual bus pass of four hundred dollars and a hundred and sixty dollar refund amount for those two hundred and nineteen families that would have paid a family bus pass of six fifty. Again, we're hoping to, to get the word out and, um, to communicate this to families this week, because there was that, there's a lot of discussions starting to come in at a, at a more rapid pace. The total dollar amount of this refund and the financial impact of this would be seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. This is one that we do feel when we communicate this out, we would provide the opportunity for families to either donate all or a portion of the refund amount that was, that is due back to them, um, back to the district, you know, through a kind of a Google animated form process. Um, and if they want to donate that back, they would receive a tax deductible receipt and we would officially eventually recognize that publicly at an upcoming meeting. Um, so that, that was, that's what we're looking to do on bus transportation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So just to be clear on, I wanna clarify one thing and, 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 and I have one concern here as well. Um, I, on the, on the tax part, what I would hope that would happen is that anybody who would be given any refund would get notification and they could, they could submit something to show that, say that they wanted to get the refund back. And if they didn't do that, then they would automatically receive a tax receipt showing that it was a donation made. I hope that it can be in that way where if families do nothing, then it's a donation and they'll get a receipt showing that it's a donation. My, my concern here is I, I, you know, I, I agree with the other ones, but, but the next one's coming up, but I don't agree with this amount because my concern here is the, if we look at the last quarter of the year, basically the last quarter of the year, the goal was that the user fees were gonna pay about fifty percent of the total cost. The school district was gonna pay about fifty percent of the total cost. And no services happened, but we are still paying eighty percent of the fee for the buses. So if we give back the entire fee that was gonna be paid by the user fees, so the fifty percent that we were going to get from user fees to pay that, even with a twenty percent reduction, we are now paying a higher amount for this last quarter for the bus fee than we were scheduled to pay beforehand. Is, is that correct, Michael? Am I, am I wrong on this or?
So, um, well, we actually, we, we laybacked the bus company down to seventy-eight percent. It's a little bit, little bit less, it's twenty-two percent savings. Um, so it is true that I guess what we're refunding maybe it's, I guess, twenty-five percent versus twenty-two percent in way. Uh, we've never quite been at fiscally that, that, um, fifty to fifty ratio. It's always been a goal of ours. Um, although the, the, you know, the, the general fund and theoretically, what theoretically what we're collecting is a little bit less than a, than a fifty percent our target. Um, and the buses, based on who opts into the option program and who qualifies for, for the free busing is, is probably pretty close to, to, to fifty-fifty, uh, when you look at the participant in each. So, um, I can see certainly where you're going, going on that. Um, I can, yeah.
I, i- if I may, well, but you, you're, you're proposing a, a hundred percent refund of the fourth quarter of the bus fee.
Well, it's, it's, it's not.
Twenty-five percent of the year, Lee, correct?
It's not quite a hundred, a hundred percent. So I mean, if you look at it, you know, I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to take the, the year down quarterly, which is difficult to do because the school year is ten months. So this is actually a little bit more than a quarter, if you look at it that way. Um, 'cause I, a quarter, a quarter is about two and a half months. We're really looking at three and a half months of no service. So if you looked at it that way, it, it actually would, and you look at it, it might be up to a hundred and twenty dollars or so, or, or a little bit more than, than what I'm offering here, uh, what we're offering here. But I, I tried to look at, you know, April through June as being pretty close to, to fourth quarter services, at least fiscally anyway. And, um, again, just trying to find that balance between what, what's fair to the families as it comes out based on the, the, the services, you know, you're not trying to get it right down to every minute or every hour or every day that, that they were there on that bus, but, you know, pretty close. And then just looking at what, what we're able to afford. Um, this is certainly financially challenging, um, but I'll just say, you know, we, we've been able to, at the end of every fiscal year, to be able to pay, um, in some cases, partial May, partial June, um, transportation bills that we normally would have paid the funding revolving account with the general fund. So the revolving account's in pretty good standing, uh, and it, 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 it actually could handle this um, without, without huge impact. It really won't impact fiscal year twenty-one, uh, by us doing this. And we're not gonna have to then take the offset and significantly reduce that or, or really impact that. So that, that, that was certainly part of the analysis and, and I, I think it's a, it's still a figure of money, um, that we're offering. Does that make sense?
It, 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 it does, but my concern still is, if you look at the dollar amount that we had budgeted to pay for the, for the buses this year, it seems like by giving the free fund, the school district will actually be paying a higher total dollar amount for the buses this year than we would have paid, even though we have a twenty percent discount. So my proposal would have been either to take that twenty, the dollar amount of that twenty-two percent discount that we got and either split that half and half and, and refund one half of the discount that we received to the user fees, or if that's not a very substantial amount, take the entire discount we got, the twenty-two percent of those three and a half months or whatever we got. Take that total dollar amount, and I don't know what that total dollar amount is. Did you know what that total dollar amount is, Michael, that twenty-two percent that we are saving?
We are sa- I mean, I can, I, I have it. If you wanna get it in, I can get it to you exactly. I have it. I know roughly what it is. We're, we're saving, we're saving about fifteen thousand a month off the, the bill um, for the month of April, May and June. And then the March prorated bill, we were saving about eight, just under eight thousand. So, so we're really looking at about fifty-three, I want to say fifty-three thousand and, and, you know, if you ever take five hundred dollars.
Yeah. So, so by saving fifty-three thousand dollars but refunding seventy-eight thousand dollars, we're losing twenty-five thousand dollars out of the budget. And so to me, I would propose either taking that fifty-three or let's say fifty-four thousand dollars and sharing it and saying, basically we get a twenty-seven thousand dollar savings and the users get a twenty-seven thousand dollar savings, or passing the whole savings on to the users and saying it's a fifty-three thousand dollar savings. I, I don't think we should give more back than we're saving, 'cause the total amount we're paying for the year, I don't think more for buses.
Okay. That, that's always been the case, though. We've never, we've never been at that fifty to fifty. It's always been a goal. But with, with, that was my, that was really what we had four or five years ago. But when, when the market changed in busing and we suddenly were dealing with, went from a two hundred and eighty dollar rate to a three hundred and fifty dollar rate, that fifty to fifty ratio, uh, was no longer achieved. And we made a decision three or four years ago to not, not to keep trying to achieve that, because it would have been so much of a substantial increase to parents in one year that we, we fell below that fifty-fifty ratio. So I think, I think this ratio is not probably too far off what, what we've historically been at. So I think, I think this ratio's not probably too far off what, what we've historically been at, um, you know, over the last three or four years, quite honestly.
And- Oh, definitely.
So just to, just to weigh in a little bit here, I do, I do appreciate, uh, both the, you know, the comparative that I asked, that Michael's done, and also the, the questions and the point you're making. To the, the point you made earlier, um, the form that we've developed, my, I've been working on, it definitely does have that ability for a, a family to choose to, um, to participate in a donation, um, because some families may realize that, you know, the reason why we are still paying the buses despite not having them is to keep those companies whole, to keep these services intact, so that when school does resume, the buses will be there. And it's more than just having the drivers, it's also, there, there's certain maintenance and things that need to be performed on the buses, um, to keep them. You can't just keep them parked and not service them and run them, you know, so there's a lot of maintenance and things that are going on in those buses now. So that will be an option for, for folks in the form that will be sent out, where they'll have the ability to choose whether they want to do donations to schools, and that will result in a, a near-automatic, uh, generation of, of the tax form, as you mentioned. And then there is also those, those options for these, uh, reductions. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Other, other thoughts on the bus transportation, you know, refund? Rich, I think you were trying to talk before, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I was just trying to clarify what you, what you were saying. I mean, it is a little odd that we're, I mean, setting aside the fact that it's not exactly twenty-five percent and the, and it's an odd, a year is a twelve month, so that. We, we are essentially refunding a hundred percent of the money for the missed time while paying eighty percent of the expenses. Um, so that, 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 there's definitely a, a, that, there's definitely a mismatch there. That being said, um, I, I mean, I don't have any brand conclusions, I guess, except, uh,
Yeah, I mean, I, I-
Your, your point, which is, which is, that seems a little off. Um, but I, I would, I would say that the, it, 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 that, for, for the, for the parents, you know, unless they choose, unless they feel differently and want, and want to do donations, you know, none of that matters to them. What matters is they paid the money and they're not getting served that.
Right, yeah.
And, and I don't know how, you know, how to get around that. And, and I think the donation part is, 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 uh, it's a good way to do it, and it'll be, it'll be fascinating to see what the response is. I would take a page out of the, of, out of, uh, 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 folks who do fundraising all the time, and, you know, don't hold back on, on when you write the letter, uh, on, on how great it would be if they did make that donation, or maybe lead with the donation, and then, and then, oh, by the way, if you'd like, we can send you a refund. Um, but anyway, I, I just, I get what you're saying, Scott. I just don't know how, how you square that with what people are actually wanting in the stuff.
Right. I mean, I, I appreciate that, Rich. If, if I could just know, because it might help, but, yeah. I think there's gonna be a lot of families that look at this and say, "Look, I paid four hundred dollars. It's ten months of service." You know, if, if you look at it on a monthly basis, I should've paid, you know, forty dollars a month or whatever it is, so I, we're, we're, in reality, it should be somewhere in the range of a hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Potentially, if we looked at it like that. So to me, we're, we're right at that eighty percent, seventy-eight percent spot in reality anyway. That's the way, that's the way I looked at it, but-
Yeah. It, it- I mean, I quickly did the, I quickly added up the days, and it's actually, you know, roughly speaking, you know, thirty-eight percent of the, of the actual school days, so we're, we're we're shorting them on, on a refund, on the refund in that thing.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not quite, it's not, it's not, it's really not a four refund quarter of the year. It would, it would, it would, it would need to be a little bit higher, certainly.
I, and, and I certainly appreciate, based on, you know, services that were provided is one way to look at it, but I'm looking at the cost that was paid. And so even if we just said we had budgeted to pay X amount of dollars, right now, we're basically saying we're gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars more than that. If this was changed to an eighty dollar refund for the three hundred families of the individual bus passes and one hundred and forty dollars for the two nineteen that did the family, that comes out to fifty-four thousand, six sixty, which is almost exactly the amount that we're saving from the, from the refund that we're getting, the twenty-two percent refund. So we're saving about fifty-four thousand dollars, and that way, at least our line item for the year stays the same. We're not dipping into reserve funds. Because dipping into the reserve fund ultimately hurt everybody as well, all the users, because, you know, the next bus contract is coming very soon, and we might have, you know, I, I wanna keep those reserve funds if we can, and so I guess my proposal here would be to make an adjustment to it and make it something like eighty and one forty, so that the entire amount of the refund, and again, I think there's arguments that it should be only a portion of it, but I think some people will make that donation. But my argument would be that it should be eighty dollars and one forty, so that the total amount that we're refunding is, is the amount that we're saving. So our line item will not be higher than we budgeted for the year. But that would be my proposal, and I'm monopolizing times, I always do, so I'll open it up to other people. I mean, Chris, do you have any comments or thoughts?
This is a tough one. It's, you know, um, I mean, I have to find myself torn right between the, the points you and Richard both said very well. Um, I, I mean, we, we've got an obligation to pay people back for a service they didn't get, but, um, but I think the, the greater point to make here is that if we were to try and justify, um, not giving back the full quarter or whatever feels like the appropriate percentage of time they needed to serve us, they, they should keep in mind that we're, we're paying that eighty percent to R and C to maintain that company and to maintain our ability to have a functioning bus system that we can pick up in the fall, which we might not have, we didn't. Uh, and as a result, you know, that's a service that everyone's benefiting from, even if their kid isn't getting picked up in law school every day. Um, I don't know. I'm, I'm hoping to sit back and, and, and hear what other people think, and then make a film line.
Diana, do you make outs?
Um, in my opinion, I think the, the data, the communication that goes out to the families around the bus service is just that, it's a service. So when they pay for it, they are paying in their mind for a service. So I agree with the administration. I think they should be refunded to the services they did not receive. I feel like there could be very targeted communication around the fact that we do help offset the cost of the buses when we do ask for those donations, and I think that if we are clear around that and we articulate that in a certain way, um, you may see people donate that to help us with that offset. But at the end of the day, when they get that communication around bus service, they are signing up for a service. They're not signing up to, for it's not communicated that they're, you know, really offsetting a cost for us.
Thank you. Well said. And again, I think there's two points there, valid points, and so I, I, I see the service argument a hundred percent as well. Janine, thoughts?
I don't know. I've been going back and forth, um, with it, and, you know, to Mike's point, the amount that's being refunded is a little bit shy if you were to break it down by day or month or whatever. Um, but to your point, we're paying more, so then to get a refund, it might make more sense to have it, um, more closely to what, uh, the benefit that we're getting by the twenty, um, twenty-two percent back from the bus company. So I'm, I'm, even if I'm still torn to which way to go, I, I, you know, if I was still having children on the bus, and for, you know, three and a half months, I wasn't getting the service, I would be like, mm, yeah, I don't quite understand the argument about not getting the full amount back. So like I said, I would still kinda go back and forth, but, um, and a question from Mike and, and Patrick. When you're, um, sending a letter and saying, gee, you know, you could donate all or a portion of the amount, would that amount for the bus go specifically to the bus line? Um, uh, payment, you know what I'm saying, or it just go into a general fund?
Um, it would have to, it would, it would have to go to the bus line. It would, it would, um, legally, it, it would, it would stay within the revolving account, and we have to be paying, pay for bus service.
Okay, good, 'cause I, I just wanted a clarification on that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I just wanna mention one other thing. I, I feel like, you know, I, I feel you have to see messaging somewhat understandable to the degree for, for parents that are just going with the law just right now, as we all know, and, um, I, I would struggle with trying to articulate and explain, I, I, you know, anything that, anything that is not related to the direct service that they're receiving in terms of uh, our revolving account and what we look for it to pay and not pay, I think it would be a very confusing message. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think, I think we kinda wanna keep, keep this as simple as we can. And, you know, financially, at the same, we, we've had some good, uh, we've been, we've kinda, somewhat budgeted conservatively and, and had some very good year-end closeouts over these past few years, where the revolving account, as I say, is in good standing, and I think it's for such a situation like, like we may face with, the unexpected, the unforeseen, the, you know, the the catastrophe, and I, and that's, that's what we're dealing with, and I, I think we have the ability to do this, but-
And I would, I would, I would, I would, in other communities, these refunds are, are, are reasonable, and I think trying to explain and articulate to, I mean, it is difficult for many of us to wrap our heads around the service that's being provided for the buses and why we're keeping that service whole. I think if people start questioning why the refunds are less because of this, that could open a whole can of worms with that decision. Again, it is a consistent decision across the state, but, you know, I, I, I do think that the funds, that, you know, the formula that Mr. Connolly provided makes sense to me.
Hey, so the, the only other comments that I would make on this are, well, three comments. Number one, the next fees we're gonna talk about being refunded, we're not refunding all of them. You know, even though, you know, full-day kindergarten, we're not talking about refunding all of that service fee. We're only talking about refunding a portion of it, you know, because there, and, and the idea being that there are expenses that are being incurred. There are services that are being provided as well, I understand, but we're not talking about refunding all of it, even though, you know, half-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten will be receiving similar, um, uh, similar services, but we're not talking about a full refund of that service fee. I think that in terms of explaining it, I would simply say that we were able to negotiate a discount on the fee. We're passing that discount on, and so we're refunding this. You know, we paid these fees for the service. We've been able to negotiate a, you know, a, a discount, and so we're, we're sharing that amongst, we're spreading that amongst all the users to return it, 'cause we feel like that's the proper way to go. And ultimately, again, I'm just looking at what's coming on later on with the budget workshop here. I, I'm not adamant either way on this one, whether it's eighty or a hundred dollars or one fifty or one forty, but every twenty thousand, every twenty-five thousand dollars does matter. It's, it's more money that we have to, that we can't prepay as tuition, we can't buy something this year that has to be provided for next year. And so to me, at some point in time, we have to be careful of this. And so to me, I, I look at it more as we were able to get a fifty-three thousand dollar discount from the bus company, we're passing that discount back to the users. And, you know, and, and I think that's the simple thing. We say that we were able to negotiate this discount because of the services that were not provided by the bus company. So therefore, we're passing that entire refund on to the users as opposed to us taking it. Um, but again, I am happy to be overruled as well on this one, but that's sort of how I feel, and so I think for the motion, I think the motion should be for either the one hundred or one fifty or the eighty and one forty, and so perhaps we can just sort of, you know, I, I think we need enough three people saying either one hundred or eighty on this one, and so I would say eighty, but I, I don't know whatever the other says. And so, yeah.
I mean, I think the proposal by the administration is, is what it is. Um, unless, um, unless, Michael and Patrick, you guys are compelled by to change the proposal, I think we will vote on the proposal. Um, and then if we need to re, otherwise, we can do that.
We, again, we can vote on that or we can modify it, 'cause it is, us are voting to approve a refund. And so ultimately, we can make whatever move we'd like to make. But I'm fine if you wanna just vote on the, on the initial, and if we don't agree with that one, we can vote on something different. But again, Michael and Patrick, I mean, it seems like you guys wanna stay with the, you think the one hundred or one fifty is, is what you recommend?
Y- yes, I do. I, I certainly understand. It's, it's not easy. We wrestle with a lot of different types of things here. I certainly appreciate, um, you know, Chairman Buck with your comments. I certainly understand it, where you're coming from. And I think the comments, um, I made earlier and, and Dr. Billy made earlier, I think we will stand by the recommendation this evening.
Okay. We can, we can have a, we can have a, a motion on this one, and again, you can make a motion and then vote however you want, but if somebody can make a motion on the bus transportation refund?
Uh, yeah, I, I'll go ahead and, uh, if I'm gonna vote for it, so I'll make a motion. Um, I move that the committee votes, uh, to approve partial refunds to, for, uh, using. Um, partial refunds for those families who paid individual or family bus fees in the amount of a hundred dollars for individuals and a hundred and sixty dollars for, uh, families that paid, uh, uh, that ma- major family pay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, I would, I would say that, um, given this conversation, I think that it would be prudent when having a Google automated form, um, giving families the opportunity to donate a portion of it, that it, it be published in that, that, uh, because of the amount of this refund and our need to continue paying an amount to R and C that we're twenty-five thousand dollars short of where we had budgeted, and, uh, that they can choose in that light to donate some of this refunding money. And I think that that might offset, uh, you know.
Good point.
Yeah, good call, Scott. Yeah, I do think it's, I, I do think it's important to, to in the, or clearly articulate that if you do this, this, that, that there is this shortfall, basically. Uh, this gap, and, and anything you donate would, would, uh, would help close that gap.
And, and again, and, and in no way am I saying this should not be a refund. I just think it's our responsibility when we're, you know, trying to bound budgets here, to look at every, everything that we're giving back or paying, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
I'm exactly, I agree with that completely. I think that your, your point, your underlying point is a good one, which is that we don't wanna dip into the reserve fund when we don't need to. Uh, and we're gonna do that for a lot of things, uh, at an average of with five hundred families, give or take, um, getting this refund, if fifty dollars is the average they give back, that's the difference we're looking for, and I'm optimistic that we'll get a large amount of that back.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, so we'll go for a roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Okay, I'm not gonna be against every, every twenty dollars, so I'll say aye as well. Okay, the motion passed, it's five to zero, and we move on to full-day kindergarten.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the discussion. Um, so full-day kindergarten, I'll try to move, move a bit, um, again, recommending a partial refund for the families that paid full commission, which is four thousand, two hundred and fifty, which does include the two hundred and fifty-dollar deposit. Um, again, th- these payments have broken out, uh, by quarter, this four payments. The final quarter, February, that'll be a thousand dollars. So this, this money is, is in our account at this point. We received it all in and we deposited. So we are recommending this evening a fifty percent refund on the final, uh, one thousand dollar payment for services over the, again, final quarter of the year that has been disrupted for April, May, and June, for a total of a five hundred dollar refund be given to families. Um, there is still, as we all know, remote learning and, and family communications are continuing, uh, you know, for, for full day, uh, on the part of all full-day kindergarten teachers and paraprofessionals, so we're continuing with the remote learning process. We, we're through the phases of that remote learning. Um, so there certainly are services, um, being given, although we recognize it's, it's much different than the, the traditional, you know, school, public services that would've been expected to start the year. Uh, financially, there are one hundred and forty-five families due a refund amount, with the total financial impact of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We, again, we hope to send communications to families this week. This final bullet is, again, one that we've kinda talked about before, thought of the date, the dated. I'm, I'm certainly open- to if I kinda italicize it, doing the same, um, that we're doing for the bus transportation and and offering uh an option for for any partial or or donation back to the district. Um, given the impact and given that we still continue to pay, the teachers and the paraprofessionals work to be programmed in full during during the full closure period, but um that's certainly open to to any thoughts on that as well. Great, thank you.
Okay, surprisingly, I don't disagree. Did it, does anybody have concerns or thoughts different than what Mr. Connolly is presenting on this one?
I actually can come up with an argument against doing this. Because to me, I mean, li- listen, I, we we all know that in a perfect world, we wouldn't be shivering for kindergarten. We have full day kindergarten for everyone, um. But we're not offering refunds of taxes to the rest of the families who are who are you know, whatever grade they're in, um, who are getting classes of a of a sort through the through the whole year. I I I guess I I can make an argument that, you know, if we're continuing the whole classes tonight, and I and and I'm sorry to admit, I don't really know the extent or or what opportunities have been offered to the kindergarten classes um, over the last few months and through and through June, so uh it might be helpful to know that, but uh, um, you know, I, if if they are getting the classes as we determine them to be, I I I I guess I'm not sure that we, you know, that a refund is is necessary or entirely appropriate, you know.
Other thoughts?
Um, it's it's a fair point, Rich. Uh, Dr. Daly, I'm I'm curious, what, is there right now a difference in uh in what's being offered to a a part-time kindergarten student versus a full-time kindergarten student and and what they're actually receiving?
Um, I would not say that that would be the the reason for this refund. This is more to do with what was offered or or the enrichment kind of activities offered between March thirteenth and April sixth. So we felt that this uh would be sort of a a different piece of this, of more of a refund to to recognize some of that time um, where there was the enrichment activities, not the actual engagement of a remote learning program.
Excellent point.
Technically, we're also, I mean, you could also see that part of the guidance is that we're, you know, now providing a half day of services. You know, that's the the guidance, um, and so I would say that that, you know, that is also being recognized even during remote learning. If you're paying for a full day of kindergarten, you're receiving a half day, but but I do agree with Mr. McGowan's point that that is sort of the directive of everyone in the district, K twelve, is receiving that as a school day is being redesigned. But this is meant more to recognize um some of the loss there from those those few weeks when there's no service. Once we resumed the, you know, the remote learning, we do feel that those students are engaged, they are receiving education. So that's why it's not a, you know, a complete uh refund.
Thank you. Other thoughts? And I think I think you can, I can argue against Rich on the opposite way, and say that, you know, both full and half day or both receiving half day right now and not, and one of them's paying for it, the other one's not, and so I think I think that I think it's hard decisions overall. I mean, we have to try to balance the budget, we have to try to keep here, but ultimately, you know me, I never question what the administration is adjusting on any of these things, so. I uh I I I'd be in favor of that. I gotta smile on it, Michael, that's good. Um. Anybody wanna make a motion on this one? Rich, or do you not wanna do it since you're?
No, I I'll make a motion to um refund a hundred and forty five families. Um, roughly fifty percent of their payment for services between April, May, and June. Um, for full day and, well, for for kindergarten.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Based on a Patrick clarification, I'll vote aye.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, five to zero, thank you. Mr. Connolly, last one, the full and half day pre-kindergarten.
Great, I agree with what I'm, the last one, and I it's following the same model essentially as the full day kindergarten, um, recommending partial refunds given to families who paid the full six thousand dollars tuition payment um, or those half-day families who pay a three thousand dollar tuition payment. Uh, the final quarter payment is one thousand four fifty um for full day and seven twenty five for half day. Again, we essentially receive it by March first, and those those were deposited, so we we do have all all the funds. Um, we are recommending offering a fifty percent refund, which would essentially be seven twenty five to full day pre-K families and three sixty two fifty half day. Um, you can kinda see the numbers there and and what that means um financially, between fifteen full day and fourteen half day, about fifteen thousand nine fifty. We wish to communicate this to other families, um, and uh, again, we're we're very open to doing the same type of um scenario with with the uh the option to to donate all or a portion back to the district. Great, thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, perhaps we can have a motion on on the full and half day pre-kindergarten?
Sure, I'll make the motion to um for the full and half day um pre-kindergarten to reimburse fifty percent of the full day of a hundred, or sorry, a thousand four hundred and fifty and for um half day, seven hundred and twenty five um for the services for April, May, and June.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, actually, I stated that incorrectly. For a full day, it should be seven twenty five, and for half day, it should be six hun- sorry, three hundred and sixty two and fifty cents. Sorry about that.
As modified, we'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich? Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much, and yeah, just 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 to the community, I would just, I know, these are hard decisions. I mean, we understand that services were paid for and they're not being given in the same manner as everybody expected. Um, we appreciate that. I mean, with with many communities, these issues have been all over their community Facebook pages and everything else. And so I think our community has been extremely understanding and and letting us try to determine this, and so I appreciate the community's support, and hopefully, some members of the community are in a position where they can make some donations back at the same time as, you know, your family is struggling and you can't, that all means you take the refund that is being given to you. But, you know, we're trying to do our best to continue to uh fund the schools throughout this pandemic as we can, so. I appreciate that, and uh, and the only, the last thing on here was just for field trips and school travel trips. Um, they'll be handled on a case-based basis, refunded as needed. Um, and Mrs. Kane is going to be uh completing paperwork to refund parents for the Disney trip that was upcoming. Very excited here that that's not gonna happen, but I know some kids are excited for that, but like everything, it's a challenging time. It's probably not up there again.
Yeah, that was great. I appreciate, appreciate everything, the discussion with everyone. Thank you.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask about the uh whether the process for refunding the uh Washington D P trip has gone smoothly from the uh from the provider, if there's been any issues there.
So what's been uh shared with me from the middle school is that they are not aware of any issues. I did, um, you know, I've been following very closely, a lot of conversation among districts as well as some actions that are being taken with the Attorney General, um, for um, really across the country with some of the international trips and also some conversations from local trips. So I have asked the administrative team to fill me in if there's any kind of issues with parents. There's also been some related issues, not not reported nor threatening by any of these yet, but uh concerning insurance and insurance claims, uh, so I've asked the administrators to kind of follow up with with individuals and to let me know if they're having any kind of issues with insurance and or with with refunds with trips and deposits. This even extends to um events, um, if we've booked a a, you know, a ballroom or something and to get our deposit back, those type of things. And so at this time, all reports are that the the that we're working with have been very cooperative. Some have allowed us to move those deposits forward to a future date, and at this time, there's no issues to report. But I do have that sort of an an ongoing agenda um for folks to update us, so. Um, D C in particular, I've told that there are not um any issues at this time, and the vendors have been very cooperative to this point, so.
Thanks, Patrick. I appreciate you uh having that on your radio.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and and great, great que- great question, Rich. Um, okay. We move to the budget workshop for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Mr. Connolly, I turn it over to you again, I assume?
Yes, great, thank you, uh, Mr. Buckley. So, um, there was some handouts provided, um, to you before the meeting um, which attempts to kind of provide a financial update on, um, you know, where where we stand um, in relation to um the present budget gap and and so forth, and so, uh, so Patrick, is there a way I can land my screen? Do you have to stop sharing yours? Is that?
I can, I can try to, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'll do, yeah.
Great, um, so I just thought I would kind of pull up a quick little update on on where we stand. Um, so to kind of update everyone, so we've been working with the financial planning team over the last several several weeks since our last budget workshop, which was April first. And we, um, we, oops, um, and we feel that, uh, you know, just the most recent meeting occurred last Thursday, and unfortunately, we weren't surprised by the news, but we certainly um, you know, due to the various reasons with the the state fiscal situation and and a a a need to get more conservative on um the local level in terms of our our expected uh income level on on our local receipts and licensing permits and and asset passes and so forth. Um, there there is certainly less revenue available, um, and for the school department, the the gap certainly wid- widened from what once five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to, it actually was about an eight hundred and eighty six thousand dollar number. Obviously, about three hundred thousand dollars of, you know, essentially, uh, all on the revenue side. Uh, with anticipation now that state aid will be lost and employees will be less. Um, we've essentially, on the fixed cost side, we backed off any assumption that there would be a need to increase the the health insurance for for new revenue, for new hires and new personnel uh into the district. Um, assuming that we, that would not be the case under the current financial situation. So if you back out what the what the revenue plan was carrying in in additional health insurance for new physicians, um, we are looking at a a present budget gap as of today with the most recent revenue plan of a little over eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, so what I've included here is a kind of brief update. The items that are above the line were all items that we kind of workshopped and discussed um at the April first workshop. So these are all items that you've seen before, um, certainly backing off on the the new requests um, that were part of our original F Y twenty one budget, teaching learning coordinator, reading specialist, um, the Florida custodian, um, the desire to to hire a a central office su- support uh, staff member to help around data and the nature of needs, and that was really gonna be a consolidation of two positions, so. Um, the so that are currently vacant, so holding off on doing that. Um, and then there were, there were two academic teaching positions that we had discussed that due to retirements, we've looked not to fail. Um, and then we had added some money as a reminder to help our technology uh device replacement plan, um, so we would defer the addition of that line item to help help uh for device replacement next year in the amount of sixty thousand. I, and I just remind you that it's not the worst thing next year, just because we do have access to state grants. Um, that was earmarked through the efforts of our state representative Brad Jones. Um, so we do have funds to turn to for that, at least at least for this year. Um, and then we had added a an elementary physician, um, due to anticipated some class sizes, so we would just, we would hold off on doing that. So as a reminder, those were all the items we kind of talked about at April first workshop. Um, some of the items that we've added to this list, obviously, the team got together uh on Friday afternoon while on the finance planning team meeting, we put our heads together, um, to see where where else we could turn, um. Again, none of these decisions are are easy, everything on this list is 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 difficult. Um, you do not, as you we all know, and you can appreciate easy decisions. We are still in the process of of workshopping, we'll we'll get together probably later this week. Principals are kind of putting their their heads together. We we had a very late in the afternoon meeting on Friday after a long week to kind of workshop the the news that we got Thursday, Thursday morning at the finance planning team meeting. So we're gonna come back together, but what we're prepared to do this evening is, these are four additional items that uh, we did come to some level of consensus with at that meeting, and and everyone's putting their heads together and and continuing to to look at things. Um, but some of the additional items that we've not talked about at the April first workshop was if we were to delay the hire of the director of these positions, as you know, we have a retirement in that, and that position, so that position would be um vacant as of July one. We've posted and we've gotten in applicants, um, but if we were to delay the hire of that at least two months, um, there's an area of savings we could anticipate for that. Um, we've looked at the student services department and certainly the directors of student services that the opponent has made in. We we do have some vacancies, uh, in that, um, and we feel we could take a hard look there and restructure the the, um, some of the vacancies around around potentially some, you know, team chair positions and and look to use the coordinators a little bit differently next year to save a essentially a point five F T E position, which would um compute to some savings that are that are noted in our documents. Uh, we've all talked about the assistant superintendent, um, and certainly something that we we know that we we absolutely need that vacancy, but if we deferred the official hire date again until September one there, there's an area of savings that could be achieved. And then looking at, um, the high school, uh, the high school, the we we, again, there's a there's a vacant position or a position due to some vacant at the end of this year. Um, and if you looked maybe not to fill that position fully and looked at a point six um, and tried to cap, there's some decline, there's a decline in enrollment at the high school, we could capture some savings there, so. All being said, um, you look at all the items here on the list, we get to um, a little over six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. We're still just shy of a hundred and forty thousand dollars shy of where we would need to be. That we would need to continue to to look at and put our heads together. Um, as the note says here, we certainly continue to workshop these items, um, and we'll be, we're gonna continue to look at all areas um in the coming weeks. Uh, but we do remain short of of a balanced budget by a little over a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. Um, it's fair to say, you know, any further reductions that were talked about by the administrative team would certainly be impacting, um, you know, program offerings, potential class sizes at um, across the board, elementary and secondary level, or potentially taking on additional financial risk, so. So, um, so here we are at May 4th, having this budget workshop, wanting to kind of see where, where the committee was. Um, the finance planning team is going to continue to review available revenues, they're going to meet weekly. Uh, we anticipate having an update this Thursday and another update the following week, next week, as we get, um, some, some updates at the state level and, and so forth. Um, but we anticipate bringing a, a final list back to the group at the May 18th meeting. Um, and, you know, you know, hopefully things, things change and this number can be shortened, but at this point, it, you know, we're not extremely hopeful of that, to, to be honest. Um, but this is, this is where we stand, so, uh, with that being said, I'll kind of turn it over to, um, Chairman Buckley or Janine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Connolly. Um, the only things I would add here would be first and foremost, the way that we got to these, this budget, the 86 gap, down to 811. I mean, we, we reduced the state aid that we're getting, um, by about 5% less than we got this year and a lot of local receipts, as you said. We think that's being somewhat conservative, but it could be even worse than that, you know? And there's been discussion about if we can't have town meeting, if we have to go to a 112 budget, or the state budget very well might not, you know, be prepared time to actually get real revenue numbers. Even this has some risk in there. Um, I, I have comments and thoughts on this, but I don't want to, I, I, I want to open it up to other people first. And so, um, you know, kind of go around and see if people have thoughts or comments on, on any of these, um, the suggested cuts. Mr. McGowan, you're using that shot to start, and I can see you on the screen, so I'll ask you if you have any questions or thoughts first.
Sure, and let me preface my remarks by saying, reminding the public who might be listening that this is a workshop and, uh, similar to a, uh, a mentoring session, uh, some of the things I'm going to ask are, are just to throw the idea out there. It can be shut down and, and that's fine. Um, but, so, I don't know if we've ever looked at some more drastic, um, measures. For instance, we spent a lot of time talking about buses already, but, yeah, would it be possible to severely reduce the amount of busing we provide to the community? Um, you know, what would be the arguments against and for that? Um, I, I guess I'm just thinking, trying to think of some sort of bigger ways to attack this that have a less of an impact on, on especially learning, uh, especially, you know, the, the, any teaching positions. Uh, so I, so I'll just throw that one thing out there. Is, is, is there any appetite for it? Does it make any sense? Is it practical? Is it impractical? Um, and, and just see what people think.
Mr. Connolly, your response?
Yeah, yeah, I can provide some context of potential impact and, and certainly something that I would say we've looked at. Um, so as you know, we require 10 buses that are operating, um, you know, daily to transport, you know, all the, the students. We, we do transport a lot of students a day. I think we're up to over 1,300 students, um, get transported by the range of, by the means of bus transportation on, on a daily basis. Um, you know, this service is certainly not cheap and it's, you know, based on the, the market and the industry. It's been getting more expensive as of late due to a variety of factors. Um, the immediate impact of that is it would certainly put, um, you know, we would not be able to meet the, the man of the, the number of families that desire busing. Um, and it would, it would certainly, um, put more, you know, put more, uh, cars on the road on a daily basis. So certainly traffic congestion up, up and around the schools during pickup and drop off time would be greater. Um, many of the schools, as you know, don't, don't necessarily always have the, the safest means of, of, of getting to school in certain areas with, with lack of sidewalks and some of the, some of the main roads. So I think the thing is certainly a safety, um, standpoint to be cognizant of and aware of. Uh, we're required by law to, at the very least, provide free transportation to families in, uh, grade kindergarten through grade six that live more than two miles away, so that at the very minimum, we need, we need five buses. Um, again, the fee that we collect probably pays for, um, at this point, close to between four and five. So, um, if you were to do away with what we're providing from an optional standpoint, what we don't require by law to provide, um, you know, you would be, there would be maybe a, a small level of savings there based on the, the user fee that currently collecting. Things, it would have to be something probably in the range of between $40,000 and, and fifty thousand dollars. But, um, I think it's going to certainly provide, put more, more cars on the road, which I think is a concern. And, and from a safety standpoint, it's going to potentially have an impact as well.
Mr. Connolly, would it be fit, the times and the routes for the spot buses would be substantially possibly increased if, if you're having to run longer routes for those students for whom it's required?
Yeah, that's true. So it's kind of got the total effect, um, the 10 buses. And we, we've looked at it, we, every year, I'm sort of, the way we can do it with nine, and we try to run it, try to make it work, it's just, it's, but, but ridership on each bus, it, it's never feasible, and I don't see that changing for next year, but it is something that we look at every, every year. And it's sort of like we're actually trying to get the, the data in earlier. Um, it was challenging, the data was coming in August, even considering that at the now. We're trying to get it into the beginning, you know, in May and, and by June 1st, so we can, we can analyze those types of things a little bit, a little bit better. Um, but I, you know, I, I definitely, I definitely think that's impossible because we hit, we run that four-tiered approach. And if you eliminate a bus, you're potentially now impacting, um, you know, small, small changes in the bus world have, have big impact. And we're, we're potentially impacting us getting all the, the buses to school on time, um, on a consistent basis for sure.
So, so to recap, it basically, we're going to need five buses no matter what, just to meet our legal obligations.
Correct.
In order for those five buses to, uh, uh, be able to service the, the three, the three schools, we might need to play around with schedules and, and school start times and, and all those things that might be impacted because we didn't have the flexibility of, and, and basically, those schools, the, with, every student in elementary schools has to be serviced, right? Within a, with the mileage, in terms of, regardless of the mileage.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so it's basically.
That's correct.
The population of, of all, okay, I, I, I understand. Thank you.
Chris, any comments or thoughts?
Um, yeah, um, just a question regarding, uh, the idea of potentially delaying the appointment of the superintendent's position. Um, if that was an avenue we were to go down, how do you guys, how does the administration, I should say, that affecting hiring, uh, a replacement? Since they're all internal candidates?
So, um, will we address this?
Dr. Daly?
Yeah, I, yeah. So I'll just address that, Chris. It's a good question. This is obviously not an area that we're, we're looking to go. Um, but based upon the conversations we've had with this group before, um, and the fact that it's still a sort of a current topic, we felt that, you know, it is something that I could offer, um, a lot of this burden will fall directly on me, especially during the, the summer season with the, the grants. We're going through a, a coordinated program review that would have been this spring that now is pushed off to the summer. Um, it's also the hiring season. There's just a lot of things that we're doing. We're not getting the HR position. We're also, um, I think what a lot of people don't fully understand about this position is how much of the human resources piece is done by this role. Not the financial piece as much as the, as the other side of human resources. Um, one reason why I, I've, I've put it on here as an offer in addition to just being something that I feel a lot of this, you know, each school is contributing ideas, and this is an idea from, from the superintendent's office. But I also feel that given the, the transitions, um, both the end of the year and the beginning of the year, given our internal candidates, I think there is some value to having one of those folks, if they are to continue, um, you know, to be interested in the position, to be there when school opens. And so, you know, this does say delay the appointment. I'm not a hundred percent sure that I would delay the appointment as much as the start date. Um, and I, I know when Michael presented it, that's how he presented it as well. There's still a part of me that thinks I may make a decision to make an appointment. Um, but then allow that person to continue in the role that he or she is currently in, um, in order to help with some of those transitions back to school. So this is not something I'm really in favor of. It's not something that we can sustain. You know, I, I, again, I, I put this out there as a proposal because I did not want to do a mid-year replacement last year, which is the reason why, but I think the very unique circumstances right now, also of trying to, um, conduct a search for a principal or a director at this time is challenging. And so for all of those reasons, I, I could support in this very unique budget time, uh, an extension of our current situation, which would involve myself doing a lot of the responsibilities and also having some help from some of, uh, the other folks involved.
Uh, sure, sure. And, and I appreciate that, you know, really everyone's ideas here, um, is, is a, a, a bad thing to lose. These are all, I don't want to say this, but they're all bad ideas. There's the least bad ideas, the things that we maybe tolerate, um, uh, giving up. Um, I would just be concerned, um, like, like, like you, I, I would hate to, to see the delay, um, in, in the appointment, and I would feel concerned about how well we find a, a replacement principal, for example, start September. I don't, I don't know how, how easy or difficult that is as compared to the norm. And, uh, I'm actually the only one concerned of.
Yes, I, I agree. Those are all part of the challenge, so it's, it's certainly part of what we're thinking about.
Right. Now, Mrs. Botwell, any questions or thoughts?
I don't have any questions. I mean, it, it's defeating across the board, right? You don't want to see it in this position, and I know the due diligence was done to really, you know, think about what we were trying to put forward and understanding we need to cut it, as well as thinking outside of the box on ways that we can, and obviously, we're thinking outside of the box, um, on ways that we could reduce the gap even more. So I appreciate the hard work that went into this. I know it's challenging. And I'm also just taking away today that you're still working on it, right? The number is not hard coded yet. You still have to work through it. You still have a delta. We're not even sure how significant that delta is going to be. So I'm just looking forward to, to seeing where we land and what some of the more solidified recommendations will be.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Embriano?
Um, to, well, part of my, uh, question was, uh, asked by Chris, but the other part was delaying the hire of the facilities, um, director. Um, I mean, is that a safe thing to do, given what happened during the summer last, um, year where the membranes or whatever went? I'm assuming that would be something that that person would be watchful over? And, um, is there someone within the administration or the custodian that has a pretty good, um, handle on it that you, you're particular that it can be delayed till September?
It's a great question, um, Janine, absolutely. So we, we certainly talked about those things. Again, still, it's not, it's not ideal or, or something we want to do by any means. Um, just trying to minimize any further impact to education in the classroom. Um, you know, I think it's, it's fair to say in the, during the July and, and August month, and I, I think those months are going to look probably very different than, um, they ever have with, with probably not much, any activity in the buildings, other than, um, you know, cleaning and the maintenance work. Hopefully, that's all going to, your maintenance will resume, um, in, in those summer weeks. Um, I, I think it's fair to say that those duties would, would certainly fall on myself with some assistance by folks there that we've been able to get familiar with a lot of those systems from a, a mechanical standpoint, as well as the waste-wratt treatment facility that, that, um, that we can rely on. I think there are, there are some people that are in-house, that are part of the custodial staff, that are aware, that we, we would turn to and, you know, during these weeks. Certainly rely on our, our, our contractors as well. Um, and then there's also the potential, and I, I factored in some of this in that number, that we would, um, potentially the, the current, current person would potentially stay on a very part-time basis, you know, a day, day and a half a week to, to come in and check in and assist during that, during that, you know, July and August, August period, time period. So that, that, that's the approach you would have to kind of handle the situation.
You'd like to feel like, like the membrane is not terribly stressed, given the, uh, lack of, uh, availability in the last few months?
Right. We, we replace the membranes, um, you know, there's, there's not a lot of activity and those types of things shouldn't be, be stressed. It, it, it's actually, we're hoping it may be a good time to do some of the, um, the maintenance and cleaning of, 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 um, you know, the tubes and, and those things that need to be cleaned on a annual basis, that we're, we'll do that. So that we're hoping the plant operates pretty, pretty smoothly, um, you know, through, through the summer months. We're, we're trying to use the down, this downtime to, to a time to shut the plant down and do that, the turbine cleaning and the tube cleaning and, and everything, the membrane, everything that needs to be done from a maintenance perspective because of the lack of, of flow. It's almost easier for us to get in and do that now. Um, so that, that, the summer should, should theoretically be, be smooth, be smoother.
Oh, I, I mean, first of all, I appreciate the work that, you know, Mr. Connolly, Dr. Daly, administrative team has done to try to get here. Um, I mean, anyway, you look at the distinct, um, that, you know, I would, I'd just like to point out a few things. Number one, first and foremost, I just want to point out that if we really examine what is being proposed here, basically the leaders of our district are taking on more work. That's what's happening, because when we eliminate the director of facilities, who's going to step into that role? Michael Connolly is going to step into that role, you know? When we restructure student services, who's that going to fall on? It's going to fall on Cynthia Conant, who's in charge of student services. When we look at the delay of the appointment of the assistant superintendent, who's that going to fall on? That's going to fall on Dr. Dale, you know? And leadership is important, and I think it says a great deal about the three of you, that the three of you, your proposal to us is basically for you guys to take on more work. And it should be noted that if you were to look at the areas that are going to have the most strain right now, you know, we're going to have, try to be opening a school in September with brand-new protocols for cleaning and everything else, which would usually fall on a director of facilities, you know? To be training a new person, to be trying to implement new protocols at that point in time is going to be hard. Looking at students that need extra services that have been out of school for three, three and a half months and then coming back, that's going to fall on student services, and who knows what the curriculum is going to be like going forward. And so I would just like to first and foremost recognize that basically all we've done to try to cut more here is put more on our leaders. And I will take, say, from my standpoint, I mean, I think it's great leadership on your part. I also very much worry about overstressing our leaders in the district. I think, you know, we've been very fortunate to have you guys as part of this district, and I appreciate you stepping up. I, 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 I hope it's very clear, I don't think the delay of these appointments could happen beyond the beginning of the school year. I really don't, because, you know, everything's going to be changed, and we talked a lot about the assistant superintendent position, um, but director of facilities as well. I mean, Michael Connolly is in charge of a lot already. We can't have him also trying to run facilities. And so I guess that's my first comments for you guys. Um, I appreciate the leadership because as a true leader does is when times are tough, they take on more. The last 138, I just don't know. I don't know where we go with that. I mean, it's clear that we're getting into class sizes, we're getting the thing that we never want to touch. Already, we are not, we are not providing levels for this next year. You know, there's no question about that. We're cutting position that looks about 3.6 in-class teachers. We're cutting digital learning specialists, I think, as part of this, which is, you know, has been critical at this time right now. You know, anything more than this, I just don't know. And I think at some point in time, we need to look to the town and say, we've collected rainy day funds, and, you know, we've cut to where we think we can cut. And at some point in time, we have to go back and say, you know, we have to tap into rainy day funds because, you know, I, I just don't know what we can tap. because, you know, I, I, I just don't know that we can, we can cut much further, you know? I mean, we've, we've cut everything we can out of the classroom at this point in time. And, you know, this district has, for years, has been trying to get to a point where we have, you know, a decent student class, a teacher-to-student ratio. We've done so much work. I don't want to, you know, take a huge step back because of this. But, I don't know, that's just my thought. I, I tend to go on too long at times, but I appreciate the leadership from, you know, Dr. Daley, Michael Connolly, and Cynthia Conant in particular for, um, you know, basically agreeing to step up and take most of that burden on yourselves.
Um, I, I'd just like to echo what, what Mr. Buckley said and, and really point that out that, uh, this catatlanse can look like level services because no one's losing their, their job on this, but we're losing three, almost a little more than three and a half teachers from it. No one's using their job from it and that's important, but that's three and a half less teachers that will be teaching and, and that, that it's impossible for that knife to have some impact on learning, even if that is our reality.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions on this?
Scott, that was an excellent point. The, um, Mike, Patrick and Cynthia taking on more responsibility, um, working harder than they are already, um, just to save money in positions and programs. So point well made.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your thoughts on this and obviously still work to be done. We're not at a balanced budget. We don't even know if this is a revenue plan. But I think we really need to really look at, you know, as a town, as a community, as a school district, we really need to look at, you know, what more we can cut without really hurting the students. And, you know, I appreciate getting this close. I mean, when we look at what we were looking for, not even our recommended budget of what we really need going forward, but even just a modified level services budget, we're cutting, we were asked to cut almost nine hundred thousand dollars out. You know, we're down to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That is a significant cut from what we, you know, what this district is saying we think we need academically. And I, I, I just don't know if we can get much further, to be perfectly honest. And I know the town is all fargling on their side, municipal side, but I don't know. I don't know where we go from there, but I appreciate the work that's been done so far. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no more on the budget, move on. We have an update on superintendent evaluation. And am I turning it over to you, Mr. McGowan, or, or, or Mr. Clava Vasilio?
Oh, yeah. Um, so yes, this is the, uh, the formative, uh, evaluation for, uh, formative step in the evaluation process for Dr. Daley as our, uh, superintendent of schools. Uh, we've looked, uh, we as a committee have looked over, uh, uh, his goals that he's created and, uh, and also the evidence that he's, uh, submitted, that he's, um, on the path of those goals right now. And this is just a chance for us to share some of our thoughts or raise any questions, um, without, without passing any, any judgment or rating any performance, but really just, uh, pointing things out that we've noticed and, uh, and provide a comment. Uh, I've compiled comments from the school committee and I'll just share those collectively. And if any individual members want to jump in after, uh, after each of these goals, then, um, still could be jumping at that point. Well, looking at goal one, which, uh, is Dr. Daley's professional practice goal, and I think just for the record, I'll, I'll quickly do that, the goals out as I come to them for, for the context of people following, um, along. So, uh, to ensure the continued highest level of effective strategic leadership for the North Reading Public Schools, superintendent will continue to engage in and support professional development activities that will further develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, instructional leadership, leadership team development, and school committee superintendent relations. Um, some comments from the committee, uh, basically reflect the idea that, that this goal when, when first brought up by Dr. Daley, um, seemed like a, a, and it's a great goal for kind of getting into the job for, um, kind of a training regimen, learning what's going to be going on. And of course, uh, nobody suspected that, uh, that Dr. Daley would be thrown into the deep end quite like, uh, like he has with, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, clearly he's been doing an excellent job, um, with that and, uh, and of facilitating with other communities, spacing positions off of, uh, off of what he learned. Um, some of the thoughts that come up are, um, wondering if, um, if part of this goal should be, uh, adapted for the assistant superintendent curriculum in terms of, uh, working with him for professional development and more her, excuse me. And, um, and just general praise that, uh, that unlike other goals that might have been delayed due to COVID nineteen, this goal was accelerated and Dr. Daley has so far done an exceptional job of, of keeping up with it. Moving on to goal two. Dr. Daley's goal is that the superintendent, quote, "will work to create the conditions necessary for all students to achieve at the highest levels. By the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, superintendent will review each school group plans for the five schools and collaborate on the individual goals of the principals at each school. Strong collaboration with school principals and other administrators on the development of administrator goals, activities, and benchmarks will serve to establish a framework for elevating student achievement through targeted efforts." Um, here, some thoughts were interested in learning how this practice goal has changed without school meeting in person. Um, some of the evidence submitted was, uh, the idea of instituting a half an hour per week in which, um, uh, administrators would, uh, would be, excuse me, I'm not the evidence section for me, would be available, uh, to, uh, kind of meet and work. And, uh, has this turned into a virtual meeting? Um, in other ways, uh, what's the impact on the development of school improvement plans through the school councils and how has the work with administrators on developing school improvement targets been progressed? Um, this is, for all of these, uh, Dr. Daley's clearly on, on, on the path towards, towards meeting all these goals to see for, uh, some of these questions brought out.
Chris, should I comment on that or wait till the end?
No, it's really, I'm, 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 in, in trying to model this a little different, both in the virtual format and also just in, uh, in this being informative, uh, yeah, please, please chime in any kind of anything to add and, and, and again, I'll say, but we're, we're only offering this as questions we're exploring as we go. If, if now is an appropriate time or, or sometime between now and, uh, and, and July, really whatever works best for.
Sure. I'll, I'll just jump in on this one quickly. I think with this call is that maybe, um, for, for the evidence due July is that I would modify it a little bit to take a look at what, um, this would look like with remote learning, with remote class visits, the remote check-ins for evaluation for principals. Um, and just to clarify that, you know, I, I've been pretty clear with principals even before all of this happened that, um, the changes would not be measurably demonstrated in their school improvement plans for this year because the idea is that we're gathering this data, we're making these changes. We're going to update, uh, our district plan over the summer and then those next plans that are developed would be, would be very different. Um, so, but all of those things will be incorporated and you might see certainly there's going to be some differences to the school improvement plans, uh, reflecting the situation we're in. So you will see a little bit of a difference, but not, um, a, a major difference until next year.
And can I just ask real quick, uh, Dr. Daley, are, are school councils still active during this process?
They have been in different ways. Uh, there's still, there were some discussions around posting meetings and things. Um, and so, you know, they've, they had to go virtual, similar to what we've done. Um, they still have been active and they still are working to draft those, those plans that would be presented to you in June and to get that feedback. Uh, and so I've given them, like I said, I feel sort of a streamlined version of, you know, what's, what's included, maybe a few suggestions, um, and I, and I believe that everything's on course for that.
Great, thank you. And, uh, and yes, please, please feel free as I'm going or, you know, after each goal, we'll pause if, uh, Dr. Daley is going to add or, 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 or share and any members of the committee. I'm doing my best to summarize the review and if, uh, if, if I missed one you'd like to add, please, please jump in. Uh, Dr. Daley's third goal for strategic, uh, for district improvement, sorry, the first goal for district improvement is the third goal overall. The superintendent will use his entry findings to cultivate the development of the school district. Uh, the school district's new strategic plan and RPS twenty twenty-five, a strategy for the future that includes a shared vision and strategic direction for the North Reading Public Schools. Strategic plan includes identified objectives in the areas of educational learning, student support services, and technology integration. The strategic plan serves as a blueprint for elevating student achievement and provides an overall advancement of the school district throughout the year twenty twenty-five. Um, Dr. Daley, uh, indicated that it makes sense to pause this goal and, and the committee as a whole, because that absolutely makes, makes perfect sense given the circumstances of COVID nineteen. But one question, uh, regarding hearing any thoughts about what our new reality, uh, how our, excuse me, new reality will impact the long-term planning process?
Absolutely. So that, that would be incorporated into what I submit in July for sure.
Great, thank you. Um, here are district improvement goal two. The superintendent will actively participate in the comprehensive review of the school district's emergency operation plan through collaboration with both school and public personnel. New initiatives will be implemented as applicable. Um, so clearly just like all of our goals or many of the goals have been, uh, really affected by COVID nineteen, Dr. Daley, uh, highlighted in its evidence, um, the cybersecurity grant program. Um, although this, this raises questions, um, in what challenges the district has faced with cybersecurity and now with our heavy reliance on remote learning. Um, the grant program has been postponed and, um, and really the idea that perhaps, uh, the improved need for cybersecurity is now so much greater than it was really ever before in history. Uh, perhaps this could be reemphasized, uh, towards the end of the school year.
Yep. And we have carried on and it, it, I think you're right, it is. There's a part of me that thought long and hard about, you know, is it too much to ask everyone to continue? But we were, we're in a good place. We have such a high completion rate already, um, that we opted to continue with the program. And I think people are really valuing those pieces. And I've had some teachers write to me even this week based on some, some terrible stories that have been in the news about, about, uh, Zoom bombing and those things that we may have seen, uh, where they really keep a connection to what they're learning in the classes and what they're doing with kids. So I think, I think it is in, important now as much as ever.
Ah, excellent. The next goal, uh, district improvement goal three. The superintendent will work to increase use of social media and other technologies to service methods of communication and emotional resources among and between the school district and the community. Um, here, again, uh, obviously COVID nineteen has affected all of these goals and really every element of, uh, of, of teaching and learning throughout the district. But, uh, here, Dr. Daley has really shined in, uh, in his, his open communication, uh, as well as the, the barrier to media to which he, he carries that, making sure that, um, members of the community who, uh, who might not pay one, one method are able to still receive live communication, being consistently clear, thoughtful, and passionate.
Thank you.
Um, and the final goal, the superintendent will lead, co-lead, or otherwise participate in social emotional learning activities to serve to address the social emotional needs of students. Um, here, the, the, the goal is, is obviously always important and, and really, if possible, even more so now, given the way teaching, uh, practices have had to adapt. Um, most of the, the action plan that was, uh, conceived by Dr. Daley, um, was, was conceived prior to COVID nineteen and therefore, uh, some, somewhat fits, but, but perhaps could be better adapted now to, uh, to make sure that the social emotional needs of students are, um, being met. I'm, I'm, I'm phrasing that poorly. I'm, I'm, they're clearly being met, but the, the ways in which that's, um, being demonstrated by Dr. Daley, uh, in his action plan, uh, there might be more clear ways to highlight what an excellent job the school has been doing in meeting those needs, given the changing environment of this practice. Um, yeah. And, uh, really just a way to highlight the extraordinary steps taken by teachers and, uh, and taking to recognize students, uh, especially those transitioning at the end of the year are, uh, are an important part of that.
Sure. I'll, I'll just note even this week, um, Cynthia Conant and, and Dr. O'Connell are, are working with me to plan the last phase of the training, which now obviously is, is going to be virtual. Uh, we have sort of a good hybrid plan there for that third phase of the training. So I think it's fair to say what I'm hearing in feedback makes a lot of sense is that for the, by, uh, summative portfolio that I'll submit at the end of the school year, um, to put everything through the lens of the current situation we're in and maybe there's some, uh, some modifications to goals to reflect the, the situation we're in as well as the original goals as they were intended, um, which I think makes a lot of sense for, um, for the second submission.
Great, yeah. And I think, uh, overall and, and really initiative and, and, um, taken, uh, as a whole, uh, progress is clearly, uh, evident in, uh, everything committed that Dr. Daley is on track for all these goals. And, uh, he's doing an excellent job even before considering the, uh, over and above extraordinarily difficult situations in, uh, how tremendously he's been coping with that and leaving our school.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback from everyone.
Any, any comments from the committee?
And I, I would say you're doing a great job, Ms. Dr. Daley. I mean, I think, I think we all kind of said it the same way where, you know, I think you were on track for the goals or you were meeting the goals already and, you know, we, we're all throwing this wrench and some of the goals became even more important or changed a little bit. But, you know, I think you've been great at adapting and, you know, appreciate you having you as the leader of our district right now.
Thank you.
Okay. So move on to routine matters. Go ahead.
She officially, I need to admit that I forgot to do it, but obviously I think he's more than just on target. But, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, I think he's doing a wonderful, wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Janine, for what it's worth, I'm on the, on the evaluation committee and I just did it like at five o'clock today, so.
You, you got to really get away with it. I, I don't, I don't.
You did a, you did a great job keeping it neutral, Chris.
All right.
Yeah, and then vote if it makes you feel better.
Yeah. Dr. Daley, I'm going to go. I think what we're saying is I evaluate, evaluate you, Patrick. Sorry.
Okay. Let's move on. Let's go to the minutes. Um, so for routine matters, uh, we have the minutes, so we need a motion on the April first. Uh, Janine will kind of look to you here. A motion to accept the April first, twenty twenty minute?
Certainly, um, for the April first, twenty twenty minutes for the regular, um, open session. Oh, my gosh, I just totally must think. And make a motion to accept the open session, regular minutes for April first, twenty twenty, as written.
I second.
Second.
All right. Chris with the second. Anybody notice anything on this? Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call. Janine?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And an I as well. Motion passes unanimously and Janine for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty?
I make a motion to the open session, um, public hearing, budget hearing for April thirteen, um, as written.
Chris? Sorry, sleep at the wheel. I second. Okay. Any discussion? A little roll call vote. Janine?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And an I as well. Again, passes by zero unanimously. Thank you.
Budget update. Uh, Michael, I know it says none here. My only question for you is can you update us quickly on the school meals and lunches? Got a little bit of a top project of mine. I think we're originally at like forty-five meals being served, breakfasts and lunches each. What, what are we at right now?
So, uh, yeah, tha- thanks to some really, um, great, I appreciate, um, yourself, Mr. Buckley, for getting the word out to families, you know, via.
for getting the word out to families, you know, via, you know, variety of channels. Uh, we are up to a hundred and seventy, uh, to a hundred and seventy-five on average, both breakfast and lunch meals a day. So, um, we continue to do, uh, very, very good work. It continues to benefit many, uh, many North Reading families. And, um, I don't know if you may have noticed on Friday, but Friday was actually declared by the state and, um, Governor Baker as school, uh, lunch worker hero day, um, to recognize the good work of our school lunch workers , um, during the school closure period for providing, uh, uh, mail service, emergency mail, and grab and go. And, um, you know, North Reading has certainly been, been a big, a big part of that movement. Um, and we've been, you know, they've been really doing exceptional work and providing a really important service to, to many, many. So, we, we did have some, we did take some time to, to celebrate their work on, on Friday, and, and I think they were very appreciative. But I, I, again, I want to extend my sincere thanks to, um, Anna McGovern, who's been the food perspective through Trout Wells, who's been overseeing the, the food service associates and, and their work. But they, as, as well as the, the, the drivers, um, that have continued to come in and, and deliver meals as well. So, it's been a great operation, and it's been a success story. And it's been being, we've been increasing the, the participation, and we're getting federal, federal revenue into the USDA program. Um, and I believe Dr. Daly is going to share with you, I'll just, maybe a little bit later, but we also was notified Friday afternoon that we did receive a grant that we had applied for, um, in the two of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to help us fund, um, the cost of our grab and go program. So, we, we had built an application a couple, three weeks ago. We went short, and, uh, we were interviewed on, on Friday afternoon, and we were notified late, late Friday, um, Friday, and that we were, our application was approved. So, that, that's exciting news as well. Great.
I just wanted to, you know, there was a, something I was going to speak to you later, and that's, hey, Michael, let you mention it. I want to thank, uh, Anna McGovern and our entire food service as well. I was, food service lunch hero day is, is certainly a true statement. And I received several emails from parents on that day and around that day, just congratulating, um, our staff and, and wishing them the absolute best for all that they're doing for kids. Um, I think our parents, too, have adjusted to, um, the difference in the numbers. And there were some, um, changes that came across that, that took some adjusting, but our food staff adapted so well to that. I mean, when you increase those, that number, um, you also have, you know, you're making more lunches, there's more people to serve, there's more people to, to get that are in need, and I think we've made all those adjustments. And our team has done great. And, you know, Anna is not just a, a leader, she's actually in there with her, her sleeves rolled up, serving lunches and, and working with parents every day, as, as is our whole staff. And the same goes for Michael, you know, really working with, with Anna and getting that grant and getting that funding, um, it's, it's huge for us. And, you know, even, even just getting the advertising out, putting things on the website, designing packages, they really, this, this wouldn't happen without Michael's leadership, and I want to give him a shout out there as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other, uh, and, and thank you, Michael, for the work on the grant and, and everything with food service. Um, any other budget updates, Michael, or we've pretty much budgeted out for the day?
Yeah, not at this time, but thank you.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Daly, any staffing or business donation?
None at this time.
Okay. So, move on to subcommittee updates. Um, I don't know if we used the update on C I T C. Is there, is there anything you want to mention about C I T C, anybody?
Um, I, I was at the last meeting. We continued to meet, uh, virtually, and, um, we have made a decision that essentially almost all of the items, uh, with the exception of just a few, are going to be deferred until the October town meeting. I know we had talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. Um, although we, we, some of the, there's one school item that is going to go forward, um, at this town meeting or, or to the select board for approval at the next select board meeting, and it's consistent with the town request. So, uh, there's two, the two pickup vehicles that are mainly used for snow plowing, um, both on the town side and on the school side. Uh, they're both the same year, the same number of mileage, the same wear and tear. Um, those two vehicles, um, due to the urgency around having them for the, the snow and ice season, I'm going to go on the, the June town meeting. I'll be recommended to go on the June town meeting. Um, and I believe the, the, the Tahoe boiler, which is in very difficult shape, um, is, is going to go. And then everything else that's not being either funded through, through an enterprise fund or with the town road program with chapter ninety funds is going to be deferred until, uh, the fall town meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I, I have a feeling it's going to be bad news overall from C I T C, but hopefully that is not correct. And finance planning team, for the update, I think we've, we've talked a lot about where we got to for the revenue when we went through the budget workshop. I think there's nothing more. Uh, subcommittee schedule, on Thursday, May seventh, at eight fifteen a.m., we have a finance planning team meeting again. Uh, for administrative report, Dr. Daly, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. I, I do believe that just about everything I was going to speak to was covered at some other places. I was going to speak about the graduation station, which we had Emily earlier. I was going to speak about this grant. I will mention one other grant that we received, I mentioned a few months ago, but I just want to give an update on that. That's the digital literacy computer science that Dr. Downs has been working on. Um, some great collaborative work. Um, I know he's very excited about the work, and I'm very impressed how our teachers, um, have found the time to do this work despite all the enhancements of having to do remote learning. Um, and they're still having some great collaborative conversations around the expansion of our digital literacy computer science. And it's really, you know, just a testament to how dedicated our team is and our teachers and our, our digital learning team to expanding the goals and vision around digital learning computer science. Um, you know, and, and so there's a lot of professional development that this grant is going to be able to cover, and we're very excited about, about those opportunities. So, it's been great to watch them. Uh, there were several days last week where they had several hours, uh, of engagement. There was, you know, I was able to listen in and participate in some of that as well. It's been, it's been really well received.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, uh, for correspondence, none at this time, Dr. Daly?
None at this time.
Okay. For future business, so tomorrow, we have an executive session meeting. Um, so for the members of the committee, you should have two links there. So, everybody will have to go into the public meeting first, then we have to vote to go into an executive session for purposes of negotiations with unions, um, and then we'll go to a separate link for that. On May eighteenth, we're supposed to have a school committee meeting with a budget vote. Uh, while that's on the agenda, I don't really know what's going on. I mean, town meeting has been pushed to June, and so I hope that we have, can finalize some numbers by then, but I don't know. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. We'll see. And June first, the meeting, um, both of them are six thirty p.m. There'll be, you know, phone numbers sent out to the public and links to the committee. I think that's all. So.
Mr. Buckley, just to tomorrow's point, I will send a reminder email right before three thirty a.m., which will be the first meeting, and folks can click on that one. And then, when, once we're in that meeting, I will send the other one. So, then there's just a little less confusion. I know there's lots of, uh, different emails coming out with all these different sessions between tonight and tomorrow. So, that'll be a reminder. I'll send one out right before three thirty, and then I'll send another one after three thirty, so we're not confused.
Okay. Thank you. So, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Janine and?
I'll take.
Rich will second. There we go. So, roll call vote. Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. And for any members of the community that listened, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.